You ready?
Okay.
Hi, good morning, everyone. We're going to call the Reno City Council meeting to order as well as the redevelopment Agency Board here. We have some members on Zoom. We have some members still to arrive, and I think we have a member calling in. Let me just confirm before we get started with our clerk. We have Mayor Sheehy on Zoom, and did we have Councilmember Reese join, Madam Clerk?
At this time, we just have Mayor Sheehy online.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. So, we're going to have a budget workshop today. Looking forward to it. One of our favorite things that we do, frankly. And we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and she doesn't know this is coming, but I'm going to ask Carrie to lead us in the pledge. Carrie Kosky, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you so much for that. And now, we'll move on to our roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We're calling to roll or we're calling to order the Reno City Council's special meeting for Monday, March 18th. Councilmember Breckus, absent at this time.
Here.
Martinez.
Here.
Ebert, absent at this time. Taylor.
Here.
Reese, absent at this time. Sheehy.
Here.
Thank you. Madam Vice Mayor, you do have a quorum of the Reno City Council.
All right, thanks so much. And we'll turn now to public comment, and I'm first looking for any folks in the room, excuse me, who would like to make public comment. And if you do, please make sure you fill out a form. And Madam Clerk, is there anyone for public comment?
We do have two public commenters today. Ian Anderson, followed by Jerry Wager. Sorry, Ian, give me just a second.
What is going on with this mouse today? It's all over the place.
Members of the public may hear, observe, and provide public comment virtually by registering through the following link, which can be found on reno.gov/meetings, https://linsreno.gov/council-03-18-24. It should be noted to those in the audience that comments are to be addressed to the mayor and council as a whole. Comments heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the council's agenda. Council may not take action upon any matter not agendized on today's agenda. When you're called on for public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name, and you will be afforded three minutes. For those participating in chambers, in accordance with council rules 6.3.11, while in this room, please be respectful. Disrupted behavior from audience members like clapping, yelling, whistling, et cetera, which impede the meeting, may result in a warning issued by the presiding officer. If this behavior continues, you may be removed from chambers. If you're an attendee in the Zoom meeting and would like to make public comment, please raise your hand at this time. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Ian Anderson, and I'm a member of the City Parks and Recreation Commission, and I'm a board member of the Reno Youth Sports Association. I'm happy to come before you today to represent those groups' support for a budget proposal that will greatly improve youth athletic fields in the city of Reno. As you know, the PROS Plan calls for up to $40 million to develop two parks that will result in a large increase in the athletic field inventory for Reno. The development of these parks is moving forward, but still years away, and so we're looking forward to developing a better current inventory of athletic fields. The PROS Plan also articulates the need to develop public-private partnerships to meet our goals for the city's parks and recreation infrastructure and programming. City staff at the Parks and Recreation Department have proactively developed a plan to immediately increase the athletic field quality that our children play on. By bringing the mowing and field maintenance in-house, the families of Reno will have an improved experience both at soccer and football games and also throwing frisbee at public parks during picnics. Following the public-private partnership model of the PROS Plan, city staff reached out to the Reno Youth Sports Association to discuss this field maintenance plan. As a result, RYSA will be helping to underwrite the capital cost of the mowers and equipment and also increasing annual fees, user fees, to the city of Reno to help cover the costs of the field maintenance program. I hope that you will all support this important upgrade, which will result in improved park experience for Reno families. Thank you very much for your time.
All right, well, we'll look for that in the budget. Thanks.
Jerry Wager?
Thank you. Name is Jerry Wager. Basically, I think in 2008, with the budget reductions, the city walked away from its responsibility to provide recreational space and opportunity for children. Three examples. Number one, in the recently completed PROS Plan, the lack of outdoor playing space was the number-one problem that the plan cited. We haven't built a new field, I think, since 2008 approximately. As the previous speaker talked about, the fields that we do have are overused and very difficult to maintain as a result. Recently, we've come up with an idea to put in soccer mini pitches and old unused tennis courts and wrecking those basically to underserve neighborhoods near elementary and middle schools. Second example, it seems to me that in a lot of our recreational space and facilities, we've given over the three-to-six time period to adults for pickleball and other types of things. We need to basically take back that and give that back to children and put the programming to support with it as well. That's a critical time of day for kids that are out of school before they go home. And the third thing is, we've got a brand-new shiny aquatic center that will open this summer. But how useful is that going to be for low-income people? When my grandson was here last summer, I took him to Idlewild Pool. It cost $10 to go into that pool for him and me. From 11:30 to 1:30 that day, a handful of lap swimmers were allowed in the pool. From 1:30 to 3:30, dozens of children were allowed into the pool at that point. And then, the pool closed at 3:30, just when daytime temperatures hit their peaks. Now, what kind of sense is that if you don't keep pools open and allow people to use them in the afternoon and give parents a chance to take their kids there after they get out of work? Let's make it more affordable. Well, you can say, gee, if they can't afford it, they can always go down and play in the river, right? We have some wonderful river spaces at Rock Point and downtown. But if a city provides those kinds of aquatic spaces, don't you think you have a responsibility to maybe provide a program for universal free swimming lessons for kids? Thank you.
Jerry, before you leave, when you said soccer mini pitches in unused fields, were you saying that was a good thing or a bad thing?
It's a very low-cost approach.
Oh, it's a good thing.
Things.
It was a good thing.
Facilities for the U.S. Soccer Foundation.
But you're saying it was a good thing?
I certainly do.
Okay, I couldn't quite tell the way you presented. Thank you. All right. Madam Clerk, are there any more comments?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. We do not have any additional public comment at this time.
And what about online?
We do not have any hands raised.
Okay, all right. Well, we'll close out public comment. I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda. All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Taylor, second from Councilmember Martinez. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, the agenda is approved unanimously. An approval of the minutes, and these, do we have minutes? Because they're not listed here.
There are no minutes on this agenda.
Okay. And then, there's nothing on the consent today, so closing that out. And then, nothing on public hearings, and so now we're turned to our department items. And then, I think we will be calling up our Finance Director.
And Madam Vice Mayor, just for the record, we did receive one letter of correspondence on this item. It was a letter of concern that has been distributed to the Reno City Council and is a part of the record.
Okay, thanks.
I think you have to turn that on. Is it working?
There you go.
Okay, there we go. Sounds a little different with the different setup here. Good morning. Vicki Van Buren, Director of Finance, for the record. Today, I'm very proud to be here to present to you our first roll-up of the fiscal year '25 budget and what that's going to look like for next year. And so, we're just going to talk about today where I think we're going to end the year and then what the budget will look like for next year based on what we know at this point. So, we're really still in the draft phase of this. So, today, I'm really looking for feedback from you all on what you would like to see in the budget, what would be the priorities, and as we figure out, nail down some of the revenues a little closer, if we can afford certain things or not, what we should be building into it.
And then, Vicki, tell us how you've structured your presentation. Is it by fund? Is it by department?
It's, I have an agenda here. Just, I have several different sections that I've structured it by to do an overview at the very start, talk about the general fund, the special revenues and other funds, and then the fee schedule. So, have it kind of broken up. And I've also put like a little, if you see it on the right-hand side there, that little triangle. So, I have sections set up so that I can stop at certain points and take questions on things.
Okay, good.
So, really, it's about nine slides. Every nine slides, I have a stopping point.
Okay, perfect. So, we'll try to keep ourselves to your nine-slide stopping point, but I want to encourage, if anyone gets lost or something's said that seems completely opposite of something you just heard, then feel free to raise your hand, and let's get the clarification. You know, I don't want you to be confused the rest of the presentation if we're not understanding something, but we should be able to hold our questions to the end of each of your groups of slides.
Perfect.
All right, thanks.
Of course. So, every year, I start with this, the alignment with the strategic plan. For us in finance, fiscal sustainability is the biggest thing that we build this budget around. And then, we also look at council's other priorities and make sure that we're meeting those as best we can based on the resources that we have to build the budget. With this budget, developing it, we had a lot of economic factors. Most of them are volatile. Fiscal year '23 and even calendar year '23 had really high inflation, had a strong labor market. We did see interest rate hikes during fiscal year '23 that really made that inflation go up, and it changed a lot of our ideas on as far as how revenues are flowing and how they're coming in. The Consumer Price Index peaked in June at 9.1%, and we're anticipating interest rate reductions in the current year as we move along. But right now, we know that recently, we've seen that the index is still pretty high at this point. I know the feds would like it around 2%, and we're still running a little bit high. So, it may be a while before we see some interest rate reductions, which will encourage people to spend more. And so, we'll get into that a little bit more as we move along. But really, you know, last year was marked as a very volatile year. A lot of people thought we were going to go into recession, thought that we'd hit a soft landing. I think that's really what we've actually done, is the feds were able to actually achieve that soft landing for us. But what that's done is kind of flattened out some of our revenues, and it's given us essentially a flat budget as far as moving forward. Developing this budget, seat tax and property tax for the current year are right on budget. I mean, they are as close as you can get, pretty much. Franchise fees are trending a little bit above budget for the current year, and that's mostly the electric and the gas, still a little bit above. We are seeing the economy still a little slow, and then it's going through that expansion and contraction cycle. We will not have the final state property tax numbers until March 25th, so we are still working through what the final revenues are going to be as we get more data points and work along toward the budget adoption. So, we do have some space to kind of change some things and also alter as we get more data. Statewide sales tax projections are lower than what we actually see in our area, so really, they're seeing about 2.3% for the current year and 1.8% is their recommendation for next year, what they're thinking. But again, that's statewide, and what we're seeing in northern Nevada is a little different. Right now, we're seeing consolidated taxes right on budget. If that continues, it will be 6% above budget, and then we're looking at anticipating about 4% for next year for growth, and that's consistent with our other local agencies as So, when I built this budget, I just wanted to give you a background of what's really kind of included in this budget. So, it's, this is what I consider the baseline budget first roll-up. So, we take everything that we currently have, any increases in some of those things, and then service and supplies that we currently have, increases based on contractual increases or inflation in some of those areas are built into the budget. We build in general capital, as typically we've done in the past, in past years. And then, we also built in OPEB and contingency. We've increased the allocations for risk and workers' comp and fleet based on the usage and based on the increases that we've seen in some of those areas. And then, we've realigned some of the public safety severance and other payouts to kind of match what we're actually seeing with the high retirements that we're seeing right now. So, we've realigned those for the year. In this build-out, too, we've also included the GEMT funds to fund the apparatus program. With this budget development, we knew though that we have some facilities that are coming online in the late summer, early fall, and that would be the Moana Pool and the Public Safety Center. So, for those facilities, they will require some staffing for that. So, as part of this budget, we built that in because it's something that's needed for ongoing, continuing to do what we typically do every single day. And so, for the pool, we have five full-time positions and the temp staffing that would be required for that. And then, we have maintenance staff for the new facilities, the pool and the Public Safety Center, two full-time maintenance technicians to make sure those facilities, we maintain them, we keep them to the standards that they should be, and continue that maintenance so that we don't get in a space of deferred maintenance on these facilities from the start. Also included is one police lieutenant. Police currently has an over-hire that was done to fill some gaps during retirements and such. And what typically happens with an over-hire is, we take on an over-hire, and then, as a position becomes vacant, they move into that position, so it's not an additional position for police. In this case, police is asking that that position become a full-time position going forward because they really feel like this is something that they need to maintain their staffing levels. We've also included the extra cost for all the maintenance for the facilities, the utilities, janitorial supplies, other things that are going to be needed for those two brand-new facilities. So, we've already built that in here. And then, as a reminder, I just wanted to put up here so that you could remember that PERS members, for regular members, is 33.5%, and for police and fire, it's 50% currently. That does go up every other year. The next PERS increase will be in fiscal year '26, so not with this budget cycle, but we are already planning for that for the next budget cycle. So, the total budget, as we're looking at it for fiscal year '25, and again, this is just baseline, is $966 million. It's approximately a billion-dollar budget. The biggest portion of that is the general fund at $343 million. Special revenue funds include the funds that are restricted to a specific purpose by law, so we have to spend those on a specific purpose. Those would be your street fund, CDBG, room tax, those would be your special revenue funds. Your enterprise funds are your funds that are treated like a business, and the intent is that the cost to provide the services is paid for by the user using the services. So, we have two enterprise funds. That's the building fund and the sewer fund. And then, internal service funds, we have our risk, workers' comp, fleet, and medical funds. Those are services that the city provides to the departments, but we provide those internally. Full-time positions, we have 1,493 total full-time positions. These do include the positions for the Public Safety Center that I mentioned previously. And you can see on here that fire has 313 positions, police has 443, and if you see dispatch on there has 58. So, between those three, for public safety, you're looking at 54% of our total full-time positions are dedicated to public safety. Additional funding requests, you'll see in your packet that you received with the staff report. Each year, each department puts in their additional funding requests. These would be requests for new positions, new services that they want to provide, new equipment or things that they feel that they would need in the future to best do their department. And it's not necessarily the number for fiscal year '25. It could be out several years, so they're asking for things that they may need over a series of years as well. But the total of the asks this current year is $56 million, and about half of that would be from the general fund. And then, if you look at the breakdown by department, the biggest department on here is Maintenance and Operations, and that's because Maintenance and Operations had on their list a satellite facility for the street and sewer facility in the north and the south for the salt-sand basin. So, they had some large costs for capital in there for those type of facilities, and that was a big ask on theirs. If you don't see a department on here, it's because they didn't ask for anything like civil service or city attorney's office, finance. You don't see those listed because they did not put in an ask for anything. Most of the asks outside of those satellite facilities for Maintenance and Operations were for additional people.
So, you had a stopping point here with your triangle?
I thought I did.
No, it's on page 11.
Okay.
You just went by it.
Oh, I did, sorry.
Okay. Is that where you wanted us to pause?
Yes, absolutely. You got me.
Okay. So, let's start. Any questions in the room? Yeah, Ms. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Thank you, Vicki, for being here. I have a couple of questions, and they're just to help me understand, basically. The first one is on page six, when you talk about a million-dollar contingency. I was wondering if you could explain what that is and how that works a little bit?
Absolutely, thank you. The contingency is for something that we don't necessarily budget for during the year. It's something that pops up and could be an emergency purchase, it could be an emergency item of some kind, or something that the council deems that necessary during the year and we didn't necessarily budget for it. In the current year, we have not spent any of the million-dollar contingency. And the intent for the current year is that if we have not had an emergency of any kind or a need to use those funds, we'll put that toward the OPEB trust and bring that back to council with the fourth-quarter augmentation. If you remember last year, OPEB trust, we did not budget for it in the current year, and so this is a good way to circle back, and if we don't need those funds, go ahead and dedicate those to the trust. So, that is the intent for the current year. Next year, again, we would have a million dollars in contingency for anything that may come up. In prior years, we've used it for a fire truck. We bought a used fire truck at one point when we needed one, so that kind of thing.
Okay, and then, I have a higher, I guess, level question. If we're looking in about $56 million in additional funding requests, approximately, how much do we have to work with?
We don't really have anything to work with because we're in a flat budget.
That's great news.
Well, but we do have an opportunity to shift some things around, you know, based on council's priorities. So, we haven't locked in the revenues yet. We won't have property tax until March 25th, so there may be a space where we see revenues are coming in a little bit higher than what I have here, and there may be a space to do a few things. But for the most part, there's not going to be a big space to do a lot of things, but maybe a few things.
Okay, and then, can you explain to me what an over-hire is? I just don't understand what that means. Is that like a part-time or temporary position?
No, it's when, say, you have someone retiring, and you want to bring someone in early to train with them before they retire. So, we would call that an over-hire. They're basically filling the same slot, but you have one kind of sliding into that new slot. We do it quite often in departments where they want to do that overlap training, and in this case, they have an over-hire currently, and they would like that to continue as a regular full-time position.
Okay. The last question, Madam Vice Mayor, that I have, and it should be quick, is, it looks like we need seven people for the Moana Pool. And did we know that going in when we were building that, and did we budget that somewhere? Is this sort of new that we're looking at?
We knew that we would have additional costs going into that. I didn't know the final piece of it people-wise until recently. We knew what the maintenance and operation costs were, so we had already built that in. But this piece, as far as the people that would need to run it, is kind of offset by the revenue that's going to come in from the pool.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. And I'm going to just ask a quick follow-up to her question. So, are the seven people for the Moana Pool, are they in the $56.4 million? Are they separate?
They are already in the baseline budget because we need them to continue. In order to continue operations as we are going forward with the city, they would need, we would need those people on staff to bring those facilities online.
All right. Can you stop my time? I'm going to come back with my questions, but I want to go to Councilmember Martinez.
Thanks so much, Madam Vice Mayor. Thanks, Vicki, for all the work on putting these facts together in the slides and sending them out. I just wanted to get sort of an understanding about the seat tax projections and the 6% and kind of what that would mean in dollars if your estimates are correct. I saw the trend for the whole state. I think you said it was 1.28 or something like that.
Yes.
And you're projecting 6, so I'm just curious where the differences lie. I'm not in economics, I just want to understand that a little bit more.
Sure. The state is always a little bit less than what we are because in northern Nevada, our trends run a little different than the state as a whole when you look at their statewide projections. And so, the 6% for us would be about $6 million, because based on $100 million in general for the seat tax, we would look at about $6 million.
Great. And then, during the portion where you were talking about the asks from each department, you specifically identified community safety departments, and I'm just wondering how we define that, what departments are included when we talk about community safety within the city of Reno?
Public safety?
Yeah, public safety, excuse me.
Yes. Public safety would be police and fire and dispatch.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
Let me go to Mayor Sheehy.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Vicki, let me ask you, when you are looking at doing this budget, can you kind of tell me, I assume that you do it basically by, you know, certain priorities. Can you give me a breakdown of what those priorities were when you go into this budget process?
Sure. We look first at what we have currently to maintain current operations. So, we look to cost out all the positions that we currently have, any costing forward on that for PERS changes, increases in longevity, step increases for employees as they move through, because just because we have them this year, they don't cost necessarily the same next year as people move through their steps. We also look at severance payouts that we may have in the future to budget those, capital. Really, this baseline first roll-up of the budget is just to maintain everything that we have and then see what we have left over. If there's things left over, then we can look at adding things to the budget. In this current year, we don't have really anything left over, but there are some opportunities. For example, like last year, where you wanted to fund some things, so maybe we don't fund OPEB or some other things that we've done in the past. That's really going to happen in these years where we have a flat budget.
Okay, I guess I'm just looking to understand how it is you define the priorities and when that comes into play and what those priorities are exactly. How do you sort of dial down on that?
Well, that's what this process is today, is this workshop, just to hear your feedback and to know what council's priorities are. So, if your priorities are public safety and police and fire, can we fit something in that space? Can we fit something in parks in that space? Really, if you can tell us what your priorities are today, we can see what we can do as best we can to fit it within the resources that we have, and that will be what we'll bring back to council on May 1st.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, and obviously, doing several of these, and I think you have done a tremendous job, Vicki. I think you're very, very thoughtful, you're incredibly smart, so I'm really glad that we're going through this together. I just, my experience in the past, and I shouldn't, you know, weigh on the past, but my experience in the past is that council will say these are our priorities and then, and not with you, since you've been there, but I, this is, I always say this every year. But I, this is, I always say this every year, I want to make sure it's a council-driven budget, not a staff-driven budget. So I want the council to be cognizant of what exactly our priorities are, and to dial them down, because that's where I think sometimes we have a little bit of a conflict. And I think we also, that's a fine line, because you guys are the experts, each department is, they know it much better than we do. And so therefore, you know, we also have to be very aware of the needs of the city that we might not necessarily think are sexy or fun. So I just, I need you to be extremely honest about the things where we're, you know, not running after shiny objects versus things that are super critical to get done. So I want to be, you know, very thoughtful, have a very thoughtful approach when we do this. So I just, you know, I would just ask for you to be very, very transparent and honest with the council, which I think you've always done. But I want to make sure that, you know, if there are things that you think are absolutely critical, that we focus on as well, I think we also need to understand that from you. But I also, you know, I think we play a very different role than inside the city, and so we hear a lot of the constituent concerns of what their needs are. So it is a balance, but I also think that we have to be cognizant of the things that also have to get funded. I hope that makes sense.
Thank you, Mayor. Did you have any response?
No, I just wanted to say one quick thing. Even if you have a small ask, a small priority, something you think isn't very large, go ahead and let us know. That way, we can look to other funding sources. Maybe it's not general fund, maybe it's room tax, maybe it's RCT funds. Maybe we can fund it with a different funding source. So if there are things that you have as a priority on your list, we can write them down, and we can kind of see what space we have to maybe work with some of those.
Okay. All right, thanks. And we'll come back to you, Mayor, for more, all of us. I'm going to just weigh in. I want to note that Councilmember Reese has joined us, and he's going to have some questions too. But I'm going to just do mine. Following up on what you just said, at what point are you going to want us to weigh in on our priorities in this presentation today?
Anytime you tell us priorities as we go along, we're making notes, my staff here's making notes, and so that we can circle back with Manager Thornley on these.
All right. So one of the questions I have is, you kept referring to and saying things like, these positions are in the base. But I think we need a really clear idea of what positions that you're adding into the base, and where would we find those in this? Is this in there somewhere?
Right, here. These are all the positions. The only new ones that have been added are the five pool staff, the two maintenance workers for the new facilities, and then that lieutenant over hire. Everything else, these positions already exist or already funded, these would be the only new positions that are proposed in this base.
Okay. I think just as a practice, I want to be careful. The state had an interesting way of doing this. I worked for the state for quite a while. And what they would do is, the base is what we have today. Maintenance is, what is it going to take to keep doing what we're doing without, you know? And that's where I think these things would go in, right? Because we've added a new thing, but we have to maintain it. And then enhancements are new projects and new ideas, like if we were just starting the pool. And so I would really appreciate it if somehow you, either in this budget, broke these out as sort of what we need to continue the projects that we've started. Okay? So we can, is very transparent to people and not sort of embedded. So a question I had is, when you were talking about, around that page number, you mentioned the Public Safety Center. And I wasn't clear, when is that supposed to come online?
I believe late summer, early fall, same timeframe as the pool.
Okay. And are we going to need additional staff to? You mentioned, for example, dispatch, but I didn't hear anything about dispatch staff.
Dispatch, no, we would not have additional dispatch staff. It would be the same staffing. It would just be police moving over to a new building, whereas the pool is a whole new facility coming online. This is police moving over to a new facility.
Replacement of an existing.
The size of this facility, though, compared to their old one, they would need an extra maintenance worker to take care of it.
That's what I was wondering. So where does that person fit in?
Then the two maintenance workers.
Oh, ones for the pool, and ones for the public safety?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Another question I had was on page seven. What I was unclear, and I thought you should just take a moment to explain this, under PERS, you lay out the percentages, but can you go over for all of us what that means?
Sure. This is the public employees retirement system. And so PERS, to pay into that system, the city pays these percentages of the base wage of the employees. So, for example, for police and fire members, they have a base wage, plus 50% the city pays into PERS for their retirement.
So what I would like to know is, is there a change from the current year?
In the current year, no. But there will be a change for fiscal year '26. So as we move into like the 10-year projections and talk about those, we're looking at those changes every other year in the 10-year projections.
So that is just showing, that's across-the-board maintenance level of what's today?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I have more questions, but let me turn to Councilmember Reese. And welcome to Councilmember Ebert, who's joined us now, and Councilmember Reese.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Ms. Van Buren, thank you for the excellent starting point for all of us. I think the reason why this is so important, and why each of our colleagues has questions, is because, you know, for all of us, this is the most important thing that we do each year. I think the slide three really is, for me, the starting point, because it tells us how we prioritize the various things within our strategic plan. And so your question for us was really, you know, identify your priorities, and I might speak to that in a moment. But I want to first thank you and your staff for being such great stewards of our resources. I feel like in the five or six budgets now that I've gotten to see, it really has changed over the last, really, three or four years, because it has been driven by a really intelligent and articulated vision for first and foremost fiscal sustainability, right? So the idea that we have had a balanced budget for the first time in decades, the idea that we are paying down significant debts, that we have refinanced bonds where we could, and that you've been, we'll just say, conservative in your estimates, meaning you have been thoughtful about how we prioritize and not grow so quickly that our ass outstrip our gains. And so I know that that's been difficult because of the nature of our economic climate and some of the changes in the way that we're funded. But really, you and your staff have done an excellent job of being realistic with us. Part of the problem in the disconnect is that as electeds, we all have priorities that we believe are constituent-driven, and we want lots of things, right? And I think the mayor referred to it as maybe shiny things. But you've been a good leader in helping us to understand what we could do versus what we dream about. Sometimes our budgetary asks are that. We're dreaming out loud about a thing, and then you're quick to tell us, here's either how we can do it, where we can do it in other funds, how we can partner with other agencies. And I'm constantly amazed by how many times I've had a particular ask, and you've said, "Well, it's not going to happen in this way." But now that you've identified the ask, let us work on making it happen in a different way, whether that was through CDBG, or ARPA funds, or road dollars, or partnership dollars with other agencies. And that helps us to stretch our dollar as far as we can in any different direction. So I appreciate that. The alignment with strategic plan, I'll come back to that, because for me, it identifies the things that I am concerned about as a council member. The first is public safety. I feel like we continually stretch and pull, and some years, we're working on shoring up fire, and other years, we're working on shoring up police. And so those two are sort of the touchstone and hallmark for me, in part because they're our charter-driven responsibilities to provide those services. I do worry that because we have retirement, and because we have fewer police officers today in a city that's growing, that we really need to concentrate our efforts. Madam Mayor and I have been talking for some time about figuring out a way to have a greater community-based policing presence. So that means having substations, for example, in wards, right? And so for me, my priority in this budget is really trying to figure out, how do we add police officers into a community that has a growing need for greater police resources? And so that's the first one. The second one is really where we've been trying to take chipping away at it, which is parks and pools. We'll call that the second P. So we've got public safety, then parks and pools. And the last one is really, for me, is priorities. And that could be a mix of things, and that's shown on the strategic plan as well, because it would encompass, for me, things like our affordable housing issues, homelessness, economic opportunity. So those are really my three priorities. So public safety, parks and pools, and then the sort of grab-bag of priorities that we'll talk about. But I think you're doing a great job, and you're really helping equip us with the tools to try to make good decisions. So thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Reese. And let me check in with Councilmember Ebert. Did you have anything for this round of comments, questions? Okay. Well, let me go back. Councilmember Taylor, any follow-ups?
I don't have any follow-ups, Madam Vice Mayor. I will have some priorities, but I want to get through a couple more slides on the presentation. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Martinez, anything?
No, not at this time. I will have some more questions about the fee schedule, but I know that's coming up later in the presentation.
And Madam Mayor, would you like to continue with some thoughts?
No, I just want to, one thing I would ask is that we, Ms. Van Buren, will you keep us on track? And then I'd like to see the full presentations and then ask questions, so that we're not interrupting your presentation, so that, because I think sometimes we jump in and ask questions, and you've already addressed it. So if you could keep us on track and then ask for questions when you're ready, I think that would be really helpful, too, so we can go through the entire presentation.
Madam Mayor, you may have missed this part, but at the beginning, Ms. Van Buren explained that she's going to be pausing about every nine or 10 slides. She has a red triangle on the PowerPoint. I don't know if you can see that where you are. And she, that's the point, she wants us to pause and ask our questions. So that's what we've done now, is she had a red triangle, and so she wanted questions now. Okay?
Perfect.
Okay, perfect. And then, anything else, though?
No.
For now? Okay. Then I just wanted to make a comment, too, like my other colleagues. I was going to hold and talk about my global priorities till we got a little more into the slide presentation. And let me just ask, I had one question on this set, though. I also had a question about the million-dollar contingency. So where does that live? What bucket is that under?
It's in the general fund.
Is it, but is it set aside in some way? Is it in reserve? Is it in balance forward, carry forward? Is it?
It's budgeted each year, just in case there are things that come up that aren't within our budget.
But is it its own line item, then?
It is, yes.
Okay, okay, I got it. And you said we hadn't used it last year?
In the current year, we have not used any.
I mean, this year, we're in, okay. All right. And then let me ask Councilmember Reese, any follow-ups? And Councilmember Ebert, anything? All right, I think we're ready to move on with your next tranche presentation.
I'm going to move on to the general fund. And the general fund, as it's built, is a balanced budget before you. It's $311 million. That does include the ending fund balance in that number. And if you're looking at consolidated tax and property tax, that's 59% of the total in revenues that we have coming into the general fund. The other big portion we have there is 24% from fees, licenses, and permits. That does include franchise fees within that number. So that's why that one becomes a bigger portion of what we get as far as revenue into the general fund. General fund history, I like this slide, because it shows that we never really have any big jumps as far as high years or things that happen, just extraordinary out there. It just shows that all of our revenues trend very smooth, kind of across time, and they grow, but they're not going to grow in some big jumps where we're going to see a lot of things and be able to do a lot of things each year. That's why it's so important that we're strategic about listening to what your priorities are and figuring out how to make those work within the dollars that we have. Looking at these same revenues, I just want to break out some of the year-over-year percent changes in them. You can see that property tax generally goes anywhere from 7% to 8% increase each year. That's been very consistent. C-Tax, you'll see, was 19% increase in '21, and 10% in '22. A lot of that had to do with stimulus funds during those years. And then for '23, we actually declined 1% in C-Tax. And since this is our biggest revenue source, that was very significant for us. If council remembers, last year, we did talk about this throughout the year, and we knew that franchise fees were coming in higher last year. So the franchise fees that came in higher offset that amount that we were under budget for consolidated tax. But that was really that flattening that we talked about when we built the budget last year. We knew that our revenues were going to start to flatten, and so we built the budget based on that, not continuing to grow, but knowing that we were going into that cycle. So for next year, I have anticipated the 6% because right now, we have three months, I'm sorry, six months of C-Tax in through December, and it's right on budget. If we continue on budget, we'll be 6% above prior year. Franchise fees, you can see, have really grown. '21, '22, and '23 do include some audit recoveries in there that's kind of skewed a little bit, but for the most part, they have really grown over the years and have taken up some of that space where C-Tax was flattening. So it's been a really good situation for the city in that regard. Same revenues, again, major revenue sources, but I like this one, too, because it really shows what I'm talking about with property tax. You see that stepping increase, very steady, very consistent. You also see that in licenses and permits, and charge for services. Again, just steady increases that go along. You look at C-Tax, you'll see the green bar, which was 22 actuals, and the blue bar, which was 23 actuals. That's where you saw that dip. So C-Tax is the one that's going to fluctuate more so than the others. The others will be consistently steady. When you look at consolidated tax, it's made up of several things. Has a small portion that comes from cigarette tax, liquor tax, government services tax, which is your motor vehicle tax, you'll see that when you renew your vehicle. Real property transfer tax, which is actually down this year, that's when someone sells or when sells or buys a property, that transfer of the property. And since we know when interest rates spiked, property sales declined. People were holding off on purchasing and even selling because they have low interest rates. They're not going to sell and move somewhere else. So those have declined a little bit in the current year. The last two, number five and number six, those are different ways to calculate sales tax. So really, 80% of consolidated tax is made up of sales tax. So that's why it is so volatile. And just breaking down C-Tax, the history of it, the adopted budget is in the green, and then the actuals are in the blue. So you'll see in fiscal year '20, we were under budget a little bit. And then '21, you'll see that we had 19% growth, the year-over-year change, it's on the bottom. In '22, we had 10% growth, and then that '23, we had the negative 1% growth. The variance over/under budget in '23 was $8 million we were under budget, but it was made up for by franchise fees that we recognized really early on in the year. We knew C-Tax was down based on fear of recession during that time, but franchise fees being up, we knew it would fill the gap. This is, you have monthly breakdown. C-Tax trends very similarly every single month, and so we trended out based on the month. You can see the dark purple line, that's our actuals for the current year, so we've received six months' worth. The dotted line, that's our budget. And you can see the first couple of payments we've gotten this year were a little bit above budget. And then we had a couple of months that were below budget, and then for December, we were right back on budget. So we are right on budget for the current year for C-Tax. When we look at property tax, property tax is very consistent. Then you see those bars of consistency as we go across. Range is anywhere from 6.8% up to 8.1% depending on the year and the amount of new construction and such that's come online. But it's been very consistent, and without a recession, we think it will continue to trend in that same manner. So this is my last slide, at this stopping point, talking about all the revenues for the general fund. This is, gives you an idea of what property tax and C-Tax have looked like as we trended. You can see during the recession where the areas where property tax and C-Tax kind of declined in there. And then the building permits tend to follow kind of the same pattern as C-Tax. And then the building permits tend to follow kind of the same pattern as C-tax. So you can see the lines very similar to that. And from fiscal year '22 to what we're projecting out for fiscal year '25, you'll see that flattening of the building permits. That's that flattening of the economy that we're seeing right now and why we're not seeing larger growth than what you would normally expect during a normal trend. So with that, I will stop here in case there are questions.
All right. Thanks so much. Very good. Anyone like to start? Ms. Taylor, please.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. So I have a couple of questions on this. When we are looking at our revenue and we have different portions of it, could you explain to me, so like there's a dollar that we get, there's a dollar, how is that dollar divided up between the other entities or agencies that we're getting revenue from? So property tax, we don't get all of the property tax. We have to split that up with other agencies.
We do. We split it between Washoe County, School District. Yes, it is split up between other agencies.
So what I'm going to be interested in is going through, looking at our fiscal sustainability priority in the budget, is how that matches up with our resource allocation. So when we're getting, if Washoe County, say, how much of every dollar do they get for property tax? Do you know that?
I don't have that right offhand. Manager Thornley may know that offhand.
I don't need to know it right now, but what I'm curious about is, is the revenue that we're getting and the services that we're providing for the city of Reno, is it equitable throughout the region? And that is going to help me try and meet those fiscal sustainability goals because these taxes are going up and down and there's nothing that's going to take us over the top. So there might be some further discussions that we need to have with agency partners about what the services look like that we're providing, what the county's providing, what other agencies are providing, and ways that we might be able to work together. Does that kind of make sense?
And we actually are currently working on a fiscal analysis of what's happening in the area and the region and who's providing what services and such. But that's going to be a collaboration between the city and the county and even Sparks. So it's a much larger thing than what we can control, but we can certainly work with our partner agencies and try to figure out who's best to provide some of these services, who can afford to pay them based on percentages that they're getting as far as property tax and such, things like that.
Sure. So like when we look at Forest Street and the resources that we need there for enforcement, I think that we might be able to work with Washoe County. They might have more resources allocated to them than we do in that department. So there's a piece of the pie, and it's getting split up between everybody. So we're all working for the same, same piece of the pie, basically. And Reno gets a small portion of that based on our, what our revenue generation is.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
And is it actually a small portion of the property tax?
I don't have it in front of me.
It's about a quarter. So Councilmember, or I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Dewar, Councilmember Taylor, for every dollar of property tax that's collected inside the political jurisdiction that is the city of Reno, we keep 26 cents. The school district takes 31 cents, the county takes 38 cents, the state of Nevada takes 5 cents, and then there's less than a penny, a tenth of a penny goes to undergrounding water facilities for.
So will you say again, 26% or 26 cents of that goes to?
The city of Reno.
Did you say 31?
31 goes to the school district. 38 goes to the county. 5 goes to the state.
And one, you said, goes to?
Less than one, a tenth of a penny goes to undergrounding water facilities for Tomahawk.
Underground, okay, great. All right. Mr. Martinez?
I don't have any further questions on this question.
Not right now? Okay. Go to Mr. Reese.
No, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Ebert, anything? Madam Mayor, anything from you on this section?
No, thank you.
So let me ask a question. You said we have $56.4 million total in new requests. And what do we have comparable to that in new income, in dollars versus percents?
We don't. So there'll be opportunities where we may have to make US Council some choices based on what your priorities are. So there aren't really any new dollars to put toward anything in this budget.
Well, but let me ask you. You said that property tax increased 8%.
Did.
So that's 8% more. And I know we have cost of living and all the things that go, which I would call, again, that maintenance piece, to keep the same people employed, pay raises, deal with increased insurance, maybe increased costs on buildings, all the things to keep us going, just inflation. What I'm asking you is, what is the total major revenue income coming in? So we can just better understand that. Something's coming in.
It is coming in, but the amount coming in is just needed in order to continue what we currently have. So we have, if you're looking at salary and benefits, each person moves through a step. They may, you know, they're moving through their steps as they're here. That's 5% every step they move through. So we recalculate that. There are costs for longevity and other things that are factored based off of their base salary. So in general, you're going to see a 3% to 5% increase in salary and benefit cost without even adding one thing to the budget.
Right. But maybe you're not prepared to speak to it today, but I would like to know how much more income is coming in, even if that has matched to maintenance costs to do what we're doing without adding any new programs or new things. I still would like to understand that better.
Okay, absolutely.
Not just in percentages. Okay. And then is there a day that we will see the $56.4 million? Understand, we can't fund that, but I still, before I make decisions, I would like to know what the budget, the departments have asked for increased budget.
The additional funding requests were included with the staff report. It was one of the attachments. So most of the, most of the items that were requested were positions, so they're all listed in there. And if you have specific questions for any of the departments, they're all here to represent their department and expand on some of that.
Well, but, I mean, it's good even if it's for next year because it sets us up to understand what the departments view their needs as. For example, let's say that we need to patch pavement in the parks, like fix the paths. And there's plenty of these examples in our 88 parks. So maybe people in operations and maintenance or Public Works, depending who takes care of that, would say that that's just needed to maintain what we have, our existing parks. So their argument would be, we need these three people, or think of it in dollars, $300,000 to patch cracks in parks. So their view that is maintenance, not a new program. So what I want to understand is you've selected about five, or, sorry, five, six, seven, eight positions, I think, as maintenance. Is there more dollars, too, that you've put towards maintenance? Not just positions, but dollars?
For those facilities, for the new facilities, yes.
And will you characterize those somewhere in this presentation?
Not, it's outlined just on that one slide that said you'd, increased utilities, cost of chemicals for the pool.
Right.
Janitorial services, those kind of things we factored in, and it's about $400,000.
Okay. That's just for the pool, though?
For the pool and the public safety.
What I'm just trying to get at, because this is going to be one of my priorities later, I want to understand, too, we've heard a lot of issues with parks that, you know, at least I have, from our constituents, this needs to be fixed, this is broken, weeding, equipment, et cetera. Many people would argue that's maintenance of what we already have, not a new thing. So what I'm wondering is, I'm just trying to understand, is there any more money in the parks budget to maintain what we have, or no?
Parks, parks, as it's built, they would get the same $700,000 that they got last year to do any maintenance that they have. And then they would prioritize that based on the needs within the department.
Okay.
I do know that last year, when we met with council, we talked a lot about deferred maintenance. And we know we have a lot of deferred maintenance, maintenance that we just can't get to because we don't have the money to do it. And so we've purposely kind of gone into this route where we have buckets of money that we give to parks, and then they can determine what those maintenance needs are based on, you know, safety or mandated by something would probably come to the top, but they have that ability to flex.
And, thank you. And then, Madam Mayor, did I, I don't recall if I called on you for this segment. Did you have more on the income side of the House here? All right. Well, here, oh, yes, back round. Mr. Martinez?
Thanks so much, Madam Vice Mayor. As we're talking about the revenues, I was going to wait until we talked about this, excuse me, the fee schedule updates, but I'm just wondering if we can also touch on the point that Council, Madam Vice Mayor Dewar was making about how we can offset some of those costs to the general fund if we're making any changes to that fee schedule? And if you can kind of break down, like if we're doing the user fee updates, if that's going to go to offset some of these positions that are being asked for, or if this is just to replenish some of those services? So I think for me to understand it a little bit more, maybe adding that fee schedule into the mix can help me get a better understanding of how to advocate for some of my priorities.
Is that later in the presentation?
We will get to that a little later. As far as the positions for Moana Pool, though, those are paid for using the anticipated revenues that we're going to have from the pool. So we're anticipating that those revenues and that will be coming in will pay for the pool, employees, staffing that we would have there, plus their maintenance needs as far as the maintenance needs as well.
Okay. All right. Anyone else need another round here? Mr. Reese?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Ms. Van Buren, I think the discussion about the way in which our various jurisdictions are allocated dollars is an important point to just pause on, in part because it seems like that's really a legislative lift, right? If we want to change what I observe to be fiscal inequities or imbalances between our local governments, that's really where that conversation happens. Because in the absence of a change that happens in Carson City, of course, we are going to be living with the budget that we have, the dollars that come in based on those allocations. It is an odd thing that the city of Reno, which has the largest population and sort of land area where people are living, receives less money than the county. And I think there's some historical, probably history, that informs why that happened. So when the state of Nevada was set up and we created counties, those counties were where the political power was. But Reno kind of grew larger than, in population-wise, and then certainly Washoe County. And as a result, it's odd that the county receives more money than we do. Now, the flip side of that is true in Clark County. It's the opposite. I think the city of Las Vegas is its own political subdivision within Clark County, but the financial resources go largely to Clark County. So we're the opposite, right?
To the city.
Yeah. So the city of Las Vegas doesn't receive the bulk of the revenue there because it's sort of a small section and not highly populated, I suppose. But they're sort of dealing with the, a different reality. And so until we figure that out, I'm very thankful that our county partners do take on the lion's share of responsibility for things like the CARES campus, right? That was a long time in the making, certainly because of the way this law is set up. But there are probably other areas where we could grow together, whether that's parks and recreation services. I sometimes feel like, for example, people don't know if they're in a city-owned park or a county-owned park, they just want to be in a park, right? And so then we're started struggling in that regard. Obviously, I suppose there are issues about the Sheriff's Department and the Police Department having different and overlapping jurisdictions at times. So again, I think that that particular discussion is important, instructive, but perhaps because we aren't going to be able to change it, we ride with what we have, right? So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Good. Let me ask Councilmember Ebert, anything at this point?
Yeah, I have some questions, and I think it's kind of along with what Naomi, or Councilmember Dewar was saying. You know, I have some ideas of things I'd like to see happen in the city of Reno, and I know we definitely need to get our police numbers up, but I have concerns about, you know, the sustainability of that with our budget going forward. So do you think it would be, you know, in your opinion, wiser to use any excess funds we have now to maybe do extra projects in our parks and open spaces until we have a little bit more certainty, maybe, to see if we have extra room in our budget over the next few years, to see if we can add more permanent positions?
I do think there's a space where you will have some opportunity to make some choices with this budget. It won't be, and again, it will have to be choices, doing one thing versus another thing. So it's going to come down on what your priorities would be moving forward with that.
Thank you.
Okay. Last call. Any further questions here? Madam Mayor?
No.
Okay. All right. We'll move on to the next section.
All right. Next section is general fund expenditures. 76% of the general fund is salary and benefits. So as I mentioned before, this continues to go up, and it does not match CPI. It does not track to CPI. So even if we see increases in things as CPI goes along, our salary and benefits alone track higher than CPI generally, just to fund those. And so that's why we're always struggling with that balance of our revenues and our expenditures not necessarily tracking in the same way. Services and supplies can track even higher, like, for example, IT costs, the software costs and things, those don't even typically go up 3%. Sometimes they can go 5%, 10% per year up. And insurance costs, so like for our property insurance and things that we pay for through that internal service fund, we charge the departments for that. We've seen a big increase in that. So even though our revenues may track between 5% and 7% or so, our expenditures outpace in general what the revenues increase each year. And that's why we really have that struggle to try to fund what council wants and really be thoughtful about how we move this forward. When you look at the expenses in total, it's $282 million, and that includes the employee benefits, services and supplies, and salary and wages. And you'll see that the two largest and most expensive departments are the fire and the police. They obviously have the most people, and they have the equipment and the other special needs that go along with those public safety functions. Again, this is expenses by department, but I just wanted to break it down for you a little bit more to show you that fire is about 26% of the total expenditures, and police is about 38% of total expenditures. And then you have some smaller amounts for the remainder of the departments. But those are the two big areas, again, public safety and being that community support. This slide here is going to show you where I anticipate that we're going to end the current year. So the current year, we do have some franchise fees that are coming in a little bit higher than projected, and we have some reimbursements that came in that were not known at the time of the budget build. So we have about $2, $3 million or so that are going to come in extra in revenues in the current year, and they were not anticipated at the point we built the budget. None of that would be from property tax and C-tax because those, I think, are going to be right on budget. We're only going to get a little extra in a couple of extra areas. When we look at the expenses for the current year, we build this out so that we know where we're starting for next year when we build the budget for fiscal year '25. So in the current year, we have salary savings. We see anywhere from 3% to 5% in salary savings based on vacant positions. A lot of that has to do with fire and police in their areas because they have to have academies. So when someone retires and leaves, they don't have a body to fill that position until they go through the academy. So we will see some salary savings that we normally see every year based on vacancies and holding out until they actually do those academies. Again, contingency is on here, listed as $1 million. If we're not going to use that in the current year, I plan to bring that back as a request to put that to the OPEB trust so that we continue to fund that trust. And eventually, the city would be able to get out of the pay-go and funding the trust, which is going to be a huge game changer for the city once we can eventually reach that, to get that out of the general fund burden. If you look toward the bottom, right, kind of highlighted a little bit, it says additional transfer to capital projects. I'm anticipating we're going to have about $10 million in excess from the current year. And that's mostly from salary and benefit savings and then that little bit of extra revenue that's coming in above budget. So there's going to be about $10 million. It's the same situation where we were last year when we built the budget. I thought we'd have about $10 million from basically the same events. And so last year, we had talked about putting that toward And so last year, we had talked about putting that toward the fire station. What ended up happening after the year closed out and we had that $10 million, we had to put five to risk for some claims that came in high. And then the remainder, we put toward the public safety center and the Moana Pool to finish those furniture and fixtures there. So none of the $10 million last year we anticipated to go to fire was used for that, but it had some other uses that came up during the year that that had to go to. I would recommend to council that maybe we set this aside for fire station and we start building that. Obviously, if we have other things that come up, it does not mean it's not available to that, but I think as a planning tool, using this to start building that pot for the fire station would be a good move for this. And obviously, council does not have to make a decision on that portion of it. That wouldn't be until we end the current year, know exactly the number, and then council could determine that. But I just want to give you a heads up that that money is there. And it's less than 5% of the total budget, which is really a good space to be in. We never want to be less in budget than what we have, but having a little bit extra gives you that extra amount that you can put toward one-time projects, because it is one-time money. And then projecting out, we look at 15.8% is where the fund balance would be for the current year, as I have it projected, and then next year, we'd be right at 15%. If you remember, that's around two months of operating expenses, and that's really where we want to stay and maintain. So going on to fund balance history, this is showing how we've gone through the years. You can see back in fiscal year 11, during the recession, down to 2%, very, very small. Don't want to, really don't want to go back to that space. But as we move forward, we want to stay around that 15% mark, again, the two months' worth of operating expenses that allows us to pay our bills as the money comes in, because we don't get all the money as the bills are in. It doesn't overlap, and the timing doesn't always work, so we really need that little bit of buffer. When we look at the 10-year forecast, this was what I was mentioning as far as like PERS and moving forward. So for PERS, I anticipated that we would have increases every other year continuing on, because we have over the last few years, and just similar to what we've seen in the past, increases in salary and benefits, increases in service and supplies in areas that we know are increasing, like outside services and things that we don't necessarily have control over. So on this slide, what it's gonna show you is the revenues are in that line on the top, that kind of gray line. So the revenues are equalling the expenses as we move out, and you'll see there's a little gap out toward the end. The one thing this doesn't factor in is additional positions, and you can see, as we get out toward the end, that gap would be the area of space where we would have opportunity to continue to grow as a city. And so this also factors in in fiscal year '28 as part of our planning for the fire station going out to bond in fiscal year '28. So it does factor in from that point forward, the anticipated debt service for that to go forward. So still, everything works. As we get into this one, it shows you the percentage of fund balance and how that works. Again, we want to stay around that 15%. You can see that stays up to 29, 30, and then it starts to really kind of take off after that. These are very conservative projections as far as revenues, just to make sure that as we're trending them out, we can cover everything we currently have and continue to grow as a city. And that's what that gap you're gonna see there, where it starts to grow on the end. That's just because we have, we don't have new positions built into this. It's just the current that we have as we move along. So that's my next stopping space.
All right, great. So we're gonna open up questions on this segment or any other segment we've gone by. Do you want to start us off again, Ms. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. So I thought I heard some good news, but I'm not sure. First of all, in the million-dollar contingency, I thought last year, we didn't fund OPEB to the tune that we wanted to, because we got about six or seven new positions. So we took, I think, a couple million dollars from that, that we were gonna fund OPEB. And then we said if we had extra money, we would fund it at the rate that we originally had said in the budget workshops. I could be wrong on that. So when we say we have $1 million extra, it might not really be extra when we said that we wanted to fund OPEB. Did we do that last year? Do you remember?
With the current year budget, we had budgeted $4 million, because we had been ramping it up based on what council wanted to do. So we had ramped up every year to increase that, and we'd gotten up to the $4 million mark. With the positions that were approved last year, that whole $4 million was used for that, and that's ongoing money. So it works, but then we're not funding the trust.
Okay. So we didn't fund the trust to what we originally had started the budget at?
Yes, correct.
Okay. The other couple of questions I had is, I'm very interested in this $10 million, but I have two technical questions, I guess. When we look at your slide 25, the transfer to PW Capital Projects, what's going on? We go to 22 million, and then we're down to $400,000. So did we pay off something, or did we build something really big there?
No, those were transfers for, when we were saving money for the public safety center and the pool. I know they have separate lines on here, but they weren't really broken out until the years after that. But we were saving money in those years and setting it aside, because, you know, we did a portion cash and a portion bond for both of those projects. That was part of that, and it was just kind of built in there.
Okay. So the $10 million could potentially go to part of that $54 million ask? We might have $10 million to work with with those? If we don't put it towards the safety?
If it was one-time funding.
If it was one-time funding?
Yes. And most of the asks are positions, but yes, it could go to one-time funding, absolutely.
So you don't necessarily, we don't necessarily want to use this $10 million for ongoing financial requests for people?
No, these are just savings and one-time money coming in higher. It's not ongoing.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor.
All right, you bet. Mr. Martinez, anything?
Yeah, I have one quick question. Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. You kind of introduced the concept of paying off the PEGO on the OPEB trust, and you call it a game changer. So I'm just wondering if you can give us a little bit more details on what the impacts would actually be to our budget and the projections if we were to pay that off?
Absolutely. OPEB trust, it's a trust set up for the other post-employee benefits. So employees that have been longtime employees of the city, and they have benefits after retirement, such as medical and dental, and some of our employees do have that. Later, you know, people hired now and on only have portions, some of them in police and fire, and others don't have any. But the idea behind it is you get enough money into the trust that you can continue to pay those benefits in the future for those employees out of the trust. And so typically, you want to have around 50% to 60% trust funding for that, the amount in there, and then the earnings continue to build in there, so you can pay out of there. What that means for the general fund is we generally pay around $8 million for those benefits out of the general fund currently. So right now, we're doing PEGO, and we're putting money into the trust. Whereas if we eventually get to the point where the trust is funded enough to pay those out of there, it frees up that general fund, the $8 million in the general fund. That's ongoing money for the future, for all of the things that council wants to see. And then the other thing is we're not putting money to the trust anymore at that point either. So it's a win-win on both sides once we get there.
Thank you for breaking it down. I appreciate it.
Yeah. Okay. Mr. Reese, any questions now? Ms. Ebert? Nothing now? Madam Mayor? Anything at this point?
No, nothing. Thank you.
Okay, you bet. I want to make sure I understand about the $10 million. Are you just saying it's just things that accrued through the year that weren't spent, so you sort of gathered them up?
Yes.
And they're not tied to a revenue source? It's just that?
Correct.
It's savings?
Yes.
So you characterize it as?
A little bit of more in revenues than?
What's that?
A little bit more in revenues than what we anticipated when we built the budget, and that's mostly in the franchise fees and the electric and gas, just a little there, but most of it is from salary savings and benefits from vacant positions.
Right. And then that, we can't count on that happening again, so you're calling that one-time money?
Yes.
Okay. All right. That helps. And then we talked about 10 different ways we could probably spend that, but you also said you just assume, see it as a down payment on the fire station.
That's what I would recommend, but...
Okay. But we might have to split that baby in some way. Okay.
And we would have liked to have done that last year, but, you know, as you work through the years, things come up.
Yeah.
So...
Okay. All right, so we're on to page 29.
All right. And just so you know, there's 45 slides, so you know where we're at.
You're doing a great job with this pace, though, I gotta tell you. Because it's not, we're not saving our questions for an hour.
Perfect.
But we're getting them out.
So special revenue funds, these are funds that are meant for use in a restricted or specific way, and it's usually based on the law. So some of these include room tax, which you're very familiar with, and the street fund is really the largest one in here. Others include the HUD funding, the CDBG funding. We have, the stabilization fund is in here as well. But again, these are specific funding sources for specific reasons. I want to just dive into a little bit into the streets fund. It's $37 million in total revenue. Most of that comes from property tax. There's a split from property tax, 69% of the street fund is from that, and then 21% is from the motor vehicle fuels taxes for that. There's a lot of projects and things that are in the street fund, so when we go and look at street fund history, you can see that in the current year, there are a lot of projects out there right now that are being worked on. And that was kind of a ramp up after the bond that was paid off in, I believe, around fiscal year 1920. There was a bond in here, and so there were additional funds going forward. And so there was really a ramp up to do a lot of projects in here. So you'll see $33 million in estimated projects in the current year, and then next year, $13 million in capital projects as we move forward. And that's, that's still a little larger than what we've seen in some of the prior years to do some of those neighborhood streets and projects. We look at room tax. We've built this based on what council has prioritized in the past. So if you have priorities on this or things that you want to see differently, this is a good time to give us that input, so that we can make sure we align this with what your thoughts are on it. You'll see in the arts, parks, and historical resources portion of your funding, there's $3.4 million. A lot of that goes to the parks maintenance, and then also to arts commission, Lear Theater, that's the debt payment on that Lear Theater. We have the Pioneer Center, art and public places, and then support to special events, as council has deemed in the past that they want to support special events in certain ways. So we've built this based on how it's been historically, does not mean it has to stay this way. So just letting you know that this is, 50% has to go to Parks and Rec, and then 50% goes to council. When you look at room tax history?
So what is that 50%, though? Is it half of the $3 million?
Yes.
Okay.
So when you look at room tax history, it's very flat. It hasn't grown much over the years. You see the big dip there in the green. That was during the recession, when businesses were closed and room nights were closed. So it's very flat, usually around $3 million, 3.1, 3.2. The only growth we really see in it is the room rates go up, so the percentage is 1% of the room rates. So if the rooms go up, then it's a little bit of growth. But if room nights are down, then it really kind of balances itself out. So that's why you see that really flattening. We've had, you know, HRAs switching over, and so they don't have rooms there anymore. At one point, when Circus Circus had you and our students in it, then we weren't getting room tax on those. So as you see, it fluctuates with the room nights as well. For enterprise funds, we only have two. We have the building fund, about $25 million, and then we have the sewer fund, which is the really large one, 300, a little over $300 million. And the building enterprise fund, about $8.8 million in total revenue. Most of that is charged for services, for those building reviews that they're doing on projects as they come in. It's split between engineering, code enforcement, land use, planning, program and service management, split various ways, but for the most part, it's about $9 million that we get from the building enterprise fund. When you look at the history of the building fund, the green area is gonna be salary and benefits. They've kind of ramped up over the years after being very low-staffed. And so you'll see some dips in the green area in those years, and that's mostly due to vacancies, as they were trying to build up staffing in the, in the department. If they had vacancies, and they've had a number of vacancies over the years, that's creating those little dips in that. You look at the sewer fund, it's about $100 million in total revenue annually. Most of that is from charged for services and from sewer connection fees. And it's split between the various uses, between sewer and drain maintenance, dead wastewater, tamewa, sewer reuse, all the various things that the sewer enterprise fund does. And then again, if you look at the history of the sewer fund, you'll see that really big spike on the end, that green spike on the bottom is the capital outlay. And so the spike in '25, that's gonna be the American Flats project, that really big portion for the city. That's, city's portion would be around $150 million, and that's what's creating that spike. Other than that, it's very steady. The other bars are very steady as far as expenditures. So this was my stopping point here.
Okay. I'm gonna ask a quick question on that last point you made. You said 150, and if I recall, it was 80 million in cash and 70 million in bonding?
Yes.
But the bonding, what's our payment? It won't be 80 million, so it's a couple million?
It's about $5.5 million, I believe, 5.6 million a year, yes.
So in this spike, is it the 80 plus 5.5 million? Was it 85 million?
No, in this spike, it would just be the building of the project, so it would be the whole $150 million, because we have to commit those funds to it, whether it's built over this year or several years.
Or 30 years.
We have to prove we have the money at this point. The payments, the way we're proposing it, would be either state revolving loan fund or WIFIA funds, and those would be drawdowns. So as we spend the money, we would draw down the money, and so we wouldn't have payments on the bond for several years after.
Okay, got it. All right, Ms. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. I think it's interesting for me when I look at the enterprise funds and the service that people are getting, that the community is getting. So one of the things that I hear when I'm talking to constituents is our building and services department, the experience that they have has gone way up. And I think that is a testament to having an enterprise fund supporting it. So we have people there, and they've done a great job of building that department. The other thing that I wanted to just talk about is, in the, the special revenue funds, we are bound by the way that we spend money. So on the sewer fund and on the building enterprise fund, when we have non-departmental expenditures, what are those, or do you, do you know, or can you talk about?
Those would be the payment, because they still have to pay into risk and workers' comp and fleet, and for all of those internal service funds that they use. So they're considered non-departmental, but because they're paying for them out to those other internal service funds, they're just termed non-departmental. They're not spending it technically by their day-to-day work, but they have to pay for those services that the city's providing.
Okay, so one of my priorities later on is you're gonna hear about how we support affordable housing, and I think part of what we do is in sewer credits, which would come out of the sewer fund. And is that part, where is that percentage in here?
It's not listed here. We could pull something together if you'd like to look at that, but if you are giving sewer credits or building credits to certain projects, then it just reduces the amount of money that we're gonna receive. We are tracking it separately, but it's just reducing the amount of money that we potentially could get into these funds.
Okay, and I guess I would want to understand how that impacts the budget as we move forward, because I think it's definitely a priority, want to make sure that it makes sense financially.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor.
Okay, yeah. Mr. Martinez?
Thanks so much, Madam Vice Mayor. I had a quick question about the slide deck overall. It looks like the enterprise fund on slide 34, and maybe I'm missing it somewhere, but it doesn't have sort of a breakdown like you did on... it doesn't have sort of a breakdown like you did on slide 35 for sort of the other funds, and I'm just wondering if we can get a breakdown like that, or if this is, slide 34 is accumulation of all the other enterprise funds that you were explaining in the other slides.
The other slides were special revenue funds, and I didn't really hit all of them in this round. We will talk about them as we move forward, like May 1st, and then obviously at budget adoption. Some of those, we don't have a lot of control over, like CDBG, we get this certain amount of funding, it comes back to council at another time for approval of the projects. Forfeiture funds are part of that. I don't really dive a lot into this level, because at this point, we want to, we really need your feedback on these particular ones, so I try to keep it a little high level for that.
Gotcha, yeah, I don't know if you could include a graphic similar to what you have on 35 for that May 1 meeting, but I think it would just help me wrap my mind around everything a little bit more. Thank you.
Mr. Reese?
No.
Nothing? And Ms. Ebert, no? And what about you, Madam Mayor?
No, thanks. I think Councilman Taylor brought up some very good points, so if we could just get some feedback on that, that would be great, whenever you have it.
Okay.
Okay.
And I'm expecting in our next round, which looks like it's the last round, that we will want to start weighing in on some preliminary thoughts, and I think we all have to just keep in mind, you've been working on this for months.
Yes.
This is our very, very, very first look at the budget, and so I don't know that, I think we're all just sort of taking all of this in, your message about the fact that we have essentially a flat budget, we just have enough coming in to service what we have, never mind try to do better in some areas, so I think we'll keep that in mind. So if you want to go on to the next and last section, that'd be great.
So next section is the internal service funds, and these again are fleet, risk, the medical plans, and then workers' comp, and these are the funds that the city provides these services for the city, and then charges the departments for that. So that's why you see some of those non-departmental charges going out to pay for these items. We have seen a large increase in the risk fund, and that's mostly due to the insurance premiums that have been nationwide, much higher than they have been in prior years, and so we have had to increase those premiums going out to the departments to charge them for that, to make sure we're covered in this space. Wanted to talk a little bit about OPEB trust, as we talked about before. If we make the million-dollar payment in the current year, and we continue making a million dollars of ongoing payments into the trust, we will reach almost that 60% funding level by 2038, and that would be the point where we could switch over and actually start paying all of the retiree health benefits out of this trust and get it off of the general fund books, and that's really going to be that game changer for the city. If we can afford to do more than that in certain years, then that's going to decrease this timeline and free up those funds earlier in the general fund to do that. Right now, currently, we have almost $30 million in the fund, and we're receiving a lot of return on investments, you'll see that green area. The more we put in there, the more we'll start, it'll start to earn and earn money on itself and build even faster, and we can get there faster. So the earlier you can put money in, larger amounts, the faster we're going to get there. Debt history, and I have a stop after this slide, just because these are, these items are just kind of different than the rest of the stuff in the budget. This includes the City of Reno debt and the RDA debt on this slide. You'll see the big area in the yellow, that's the retract debt on the bottom, and then you'll see a little bump out there in 2025, that's going to be the $70 million for the American Flats or bond. But overall, you can see that over the last more than 10 years, we've been declining for the most part along the scale, and so really been thoughtful as far as taking out new debt, paying off debt before we take out new debt on other things, and I think this slide is very representative of that, because at one point, way back in 2009, we were at a peak over there, over $600 million, and now we're out here around $500 million going forward, and it's been pretty steady around that $500 million mark for a while, which shows that we're paying off debt before we take on new debt.
All right. Another round of good info, so let me again, start with Councilmember Taylor.
I just have one quick question. Is the $500 million mark where we want to be as far as being fiscally healthy and responsible as far as with the debt? I mean, based on what we have as revenues and expenses?
Based on what we can afford, yes. I would say staying around that keeps us at a mark where we can still pay the debt, but still continue to grow a little bit too, so we're not strapped by just debt payments, kind of like being mortgage broke. You don't want to be mortgage broke, but you want to have that extra little bit where you can add some things.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Martinez.
Nothing for me, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Reese, anything? Ms. Ebert on this?
Yeah, I do have a question.
Yeah.
So I just want to get back into the OPEB a little bit. So I know we didn't, we made about not to fund it as much, to use the money for some other things last time around, so are we currently paying the PERS out of the general fund?
The OPEB is currently, we're paying the PEGO portion out of the general fund, and then any additional, we would be putting toward the trust.
Okay, so how much are we paying out of the general fund right now for that?
Right now, it ranges around $8 million, and that's for retiree medical payments, and so it does fluctuate based on the claims that come in, because we pay the actual claims.
Okay, so it's about 8 million annually?
About 8 million, yes.
Okay, okay, and then how far off are we from having that fully funded so that we wouldn't need to pay out of the general fund?
It would be, you would want to be at least around the 50% to 60% level, so we're still quite a few years out, but about 20, 2038 on here. The level on the top, that red line, would be the 60% funding level, and we want to be somewhere around that, and so projecting it out, if we just did $1 million every year, we would get there at 2038. What was presented with last year's budget, for the last few years, we put around $3.5 to $4 million into the trust, and so that's why it's built faster, and it just depends on council's priorities, whether we want to fund this, or we want to partially and use money for other things. Obviously, we would like to fund this, but you, our resources are very limited, so depending on the priorities, this is an area where we can cut a little bit, and it just takes us longer to get there.
Okay, so if we put the full 10 million in here, how close would that get us to fully funding?
I'd have to run the projections. I think it would probably, we'd get there within 10 years at least.
Okay.
I think last year, we had projections of putting in the 4 million, and if we put in the 4 million last year, we would have gotten there within 10 years. By doing this, it takes us about 15 years to get there.
Even if we put the full 10 million in?
If we did the 10, it would be, if we did the 10 million, we'd get there in about 10 years.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I'll ask a question, follow-up to Ms. Ebert. So you're saying the year before last, or the current year, we put 3 to 4 million?
In the current year, we don't have any funding. Prior to that, we were putting anywhere from 3.5 to 4 million for the last four or five years.
We were?
Yes.
Okay, so this is quite a departure. But now you're saying not 3 to 4 million, you're saying 1 million?
That's all I have, the way it's rolled up, until we see what some final numbers are for revenues and such.
Okay. And then I had a question on, going back to page 39, on the workers' comp. So for years, the workers' comp, you know, we had sort of a push-pull, so we had a management group managing workers' comp, I believe, and it seemed that they were at odds with our employees, questioning severely whether they really got hurt on the job, and pretty much denying payments, and I think we took a different tact. Could you just talk to us about that?
Sure. A couple of years ago, workers' comp and risk were switched to be under HR.
Yeah.
And so they get a lot better service and more attention to these claims and to the employees who have these claims, so they are providing a much better service under our HR system.
So we brought it in-house from a third-party administrator, is that right?
We still use a third-party administrator, but I think it's much, much more managed by the city now.
Okay. I haven't heard the level of complaints that I heard several years ago.
I think we were more hands-off previously, even though it was technically still managed by the city. You have that third-party administrator, kind of like you do for medical claims.
Yeah.
But you need to stay on them and really manage them in order to get the right outcomes and the right resources.
Well, it was very disappointing for our employees. I mean, for me, I couldn't believe that we, it felt like shabby treatment of our employees. I mean, most of them, I'd say 98% had legitimate claims that needed to be paid, and many people were waiting a long time to get any kind of compensation, you know, for what they were going through, so they were basically having to pay out of pocket. So I was just wondering, from a financial point of view, what does this 29 million really mean? What does, is that an additional?
It represents the expenditures that we have, we anticipate for the current year, so, or this budget year, and then the ending fund balance, this does include the ending fund balance, and we have anywhere from 15 to 17 million in this fund. We really need to grow this fund, because the liabilities that exist out there in the future are much, much larger than the cash that we have, but really, we're on the PEGO basis on this too. It's one of the ones that we need to continue to build.
So again, though, what does the 29 million represent? Is that?
15 million of it would be cash, and then the other would be the claims that we anticipate for next year.
So another 15 million?
In claims, yes.
But the cash isn't that for, are you saying existing claims and new claims?
Both. It's just the claims that come in each year.
I think I'm still not sure. So is the 15 million sitting in a cash pot to pay claims?
It's budgeted, and it's being paid in as revenue from all the departments.
I got you.
The revenue comes from the departments, we pay out the claims, and then we have cash.
Got you, okay, I understand. And Mayor Sheevy, any comments on this section? The OPEB trust or the debt history? I mean, you and I, probably longer than anyone, have seen this debt go down, and, you know, we've been comparing it to the 2009, I think the high was something like 650 million, and at some point, we had brought it down to, I want to say, 400 million? We balanced out at 500 million, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. All right. Okay, so last section, I guess, or one of?
Last section, fee schedule. So as part of the budget process, we do review the fee schedule. We have to wait for the Consumer Price Index that comes out in December of each year. That's what our fee schedule, most of our fees can go up by, and that's the Western Region's Consumer Price Index. Just as a history on the side there, I wanted to list what the CPI has been in the previous years. We've seen during those inflation years, the 7.1 and the 6.2, pretty high compared to some of the prior years. In the current year, for fiscal year '25, it'll be 3.6, because that was the number in December. We look at the fees, and we put, we go ahead and apply that CPI, and we send it out to the departments, so that they can look at it, make sure that everything looks good, adjust any of their other fees that maybe are flat fees, or fees that are based on something else. We also send out to the city boards and commissions, so that they can give feedback on anything they see on here that's a little different, or odd, or questions that they have on it, to make sure that we get that feedback for your consideration before budget adoption. On the fee schedule, we have some that we increase by CPI. Those include like business license, development services, enforcement, police. Some of police's fees are set by NRS or the FBI. Muni Court doesn't have any changes. Fire prevention permits, they've consolidated a lot of their fees and tried to simplify some of their lines, so it may look a little different, but they've tried to simplify that. Parks and Rec, they do have a simplified schedule as well. They've tried to consolidate and create some new ranges as far as Parks and Rec fees are concerned, and I don't know if you remember last year's fee schedule, I mean, just pages and pages, it's not an easy read document to start with, and then Parks and Rec really had a lot of various things, so they've really tried to simplify that and make it easier for just regular people, and including myself, to read it, because it was a lot. Special events, there's some new banner and some signage permit fees that are on there, and then we have certain things that are per statute, or ordinance, or other method. The building valuation table that comes out every February, that is adjusted each year for the building fees. And then this, new to this year is code enforcement and the fire, they have some fees, well, they have some fines that are listed in Reno Municipal Code, and they would like to move those to the fee schedule, so that is something that we do need to have some direction on council, if that's something you want to move forward with. The way it currently exists in Reno Municipal Code, it's not easily adjustable. You have to come back, and you have to redo those codes and redo all that in order to change those fines, and so for like code enforcement, I believe they've been in effect since 1990. Yeah, that's the note I had, since 1990. And so by incorporating these onto the fee schedule, you'd be able to review them every year and update them as needed versus going through that whole process. What that would entail, though, would going, it would require an ordinance change, and so that is one thing that we would like to get some direction on today, as far as what ideas you'd have on that, what your preference is on that as well. So the notable changes on the fee schedule, I just kind of summarized on this one slide here. The CPI, the 3.6%, the building valuation table. The building valuation table actually went down, and that's actually a cost of materials nationwide, and it's based on the cost of the materials, and so materials have actually gone down a little bit based on that table, and that's the first time we've seen that since 2012. That table has gone up since 2012, this is the first time that we've seen it since that, that it's actually gone down a little bit. Parks and Rec, they've simplified, as I mentioned, and grouped a lot of similar fees, and they're proposing utilizing a sliding scale membership program so that everyone can have access. And by doing this sliding scale, they've been able to figure out a way to expand their discounts as well, and the idea behind this is that people would get year-round membership, they would have access to all the facilities, they get a membership just like you would to a gym or something else, where you could use any facility at any time, and you would also have that accessibility for everyone, because they've expanded the discounts available based on income level and some other things, and so that's really trying to make sure that people have access to the facilities and they're able to use those in a way that works for them. The code enforcement, as I mentioned earlier, the idea is to remove the fines from the Reno Municipal Code and put them on the fee schedule. Most of the fines, as they're presented right now on the fee schedule that you have, are increased by 10 to $40, depending on, and then it would require an ordinance change, as well as the one for fire too, if you want to put those on the fee schedule and be able to review those more regularly. This is consistent with other local agencies, they have a fine and fee schedule, not just a fee schedule, it's a fee and fine schedule, and it's consistent with other agencies as far as doing it this way, because then you can review it without such a laborious process. So that's the end of this section. If you have specific questions on fees and fines, we have the departments here if you want to talk about any of those.
Sure, yes. Ms. Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. I just have a question, if, are there negative impacts to taking the code enforcement and fire and moving them into the schedules, the fee schedules? Is there something, it sounds like a reasonable idea, and the benefits are, we would be closer to it at a regular interval?
Right.
And we could adjust as necessary, but is there something that I'm missing?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, like, for example, the code enforcement, it hasn't been looked at since 1990, so, I mean, it's a benefit to the city to look at it. Our fees are way behind other jurisdictions, because we can't change them annually, they're in the code.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, what about you, Mr. Martinez?
Thank you so much. I do have some specific questions on some of the fees, so I was just wondering what a permit application fee is, and there was also something in there about an extension period, and I don't know if I'm reading it wrong, but to me, that seemed to be a new fee, and so I'm wondering why we're also adding an extension fee to it when it is a new fee, unless I'm misunderstanding that.
Is that in the building fees?
Yes, the permit application fee. Yes, the permit application fee.
I'm gonna defer that one.
Chris Pingree, Director of Development Services. Good after -- not quite afternoon, almost. Almost. So the fees, the two specific fees that you are questioning were, one is the application fee. We've never, the time that it goes through to take in a building permit for all of the other reviewing partners within the city, with the health, with any of our outside sister agencies, we've never charged a fee for that across the board. It was included kind of in their permit fee, but as we start to realize how much time goes into that, we wanted to kind of be parallel with the other jurisdictions within the Truckee Meadows to charge just a minimal fee for the actual application processing for that permit fee. And the permit extension fee, as we go through, every time a permit expires after a six-month, you know, downtime, if there's no work has been performed or nothing else has been done on that permit, that permit automatically goes into expiration status. And so it's a physical process for our folks to go back in and to reinstate those permits and extend them, and there's a time and a labor that goes into doing that.
So once these new fees are, if they were to be enacted, you're basically saying that they have a window to get any of the work done, and if they don't meet that window to reopen their building permit, they'd have to pay this extension fee?
And really, what it boils down to is the cost of doing that business, right? If they let their permit lapse and it goes into expiration status, it takes us staff time and resources in order to reopen that and give them another six-month, 180-day extension on that. So we're just trying to actually recoup the cost of what it takes to do that work.
Got you. Okay, just making sure I understand the ask. Thanks so much for explaining that. I do also want to thank you all for bringing those updates to the Reno Municipal Code and having that packaged up in the future and having us look at those updates along with the enforcement fee schedule. I had a question about the FEMA elevation certification review and what that is all about.
FEMA, so between the departments, between utility services and development services, we had put together, as we developed some of this tougher-to-develop land, anything in a floodway, floodplain, we have realized over the years that it takes our staff a substantial amount of time. So what we have talked about interdepartmentally is going out for an RFQ to hire a consultant to start doing some of that work, a specialty consultant that does floodway review, with an expedited timeframe. So we haven't developed that SOQ or RFQ process yet, but we are in the -- we want to make sure that was on the fee schedule prior to going out to hire that outside consultant to do the floodway reviews.
Okay, that makes sense. I have a few other questions, but I see my time is up, so I'll wait till the next one.
Well, okay, but let me ask just a follow-up to that, Chris, before you leave. I thought those reviews were done over in utility services?
Good afternoon, Trina McGee, Director of Utility Services. I think it is afternoon now. Yes, those reviews are typically handled by our staff. We have two staff who typically handle those, and they also have a full workload that they do. So when these applications come in, it really takes a long time and a lot of effort, and so in order to help on the development side and get these reviews completed in a more timely manner and to balance out the workload for staff, we thought it might be appropriate to hire a consultant to do the reviews for us, where those can be completed in a more timely manner and balance workload for staff.
Okay. All right. All right, Mr. Reese?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. I wanted to chat a little bit about code enforcement here, and it looks like Mr. Woodley is here. So we get a ton of service requests for parking enforcement. So what does the scheduled fines look like in that arena? What are we doing to improve our resources directed at that?
Yes, thank you, Alex Woodley, for the record, Director of Parking Code Enforcement. So what we've done, sir, is right now, the way the fees are, they're really pretty much insignificant as far as the impact on, because obviously, the intent is to deter violations. So our hope is that by increasing the fees, and in the future, in the near future, once we see that the revenue is in fact generating more revenue, our intent is to pursue acquiring more resources for the department.
So I appreciate sort of the nuanced answer, but I'm not sure I understood one part of it. So I think of parking fees or fines as both being related to deterring future conduct and also it's supposed to be essentially revenue-neutral to us, meaning that should at least cover the costs. And my understanding is we have fewer parking enforcement code operators than we've ever had. So I'm just trying to figure out, how do we make it sustainable? Because ultimately, what we want to make sure is that people are not, you know, parking in handicap stalls. We want to make sure that people are parking, and for many businesses, the turnover of the parking is what helps them to continue their business operations model for their business. So help me understand, are we net revenue-neutral? Or I'm not trying to make a whole bunch of money off of parking enforcement. I'm just trying to make sure that we pay for the services that we need. And it is a fair amount of the calls for service requests that we get, whether it's an abandoned vehicle, it could be, I suppose, even an abandoned RV. And so we're trying to make sure disabled vehicles are not hanging out on, you know, brink-be for a long time. So where are we in that sort of, I don't know, we'll call it balancing act of making sure that it pays for the code enforcement officers that we need?
Yes, sir. We're definitely below. We're not attaining enough to recoup the costs of the officers themselves, and you are correct, we do serve 700 to 900 complaints a month.
Yeah, and is that also with our SAVE officers? Do we kind of work with them?
They do assist us with some of the minor first responses, first inspections, yes, sir.
So it seems like we're not adjusting the fees high enough. So I guess my point to you is, I would like us to be net revenue-neutral. I don't want us to make money off it. I'm not trying to grow parking enforcement that way, but I want it to make sure it pays for the people we have doing the work. So how do we get to that point? Do we have to, like, get to $100 a fee, a ticket, or?
At this point, we think this should make a significant impact, and we are also considering the fact that the amount that we're increasing it thus far, so we'd like to start at that at this point. And then in the near future, the great thing is that we will be able to review them each year. So we will follow up with city manager staff to ensure that we are meeting that goal to make sure that we're self-sustaining. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Ms. Ebert, anything? Not yet? Okay. Yes, what's that?
I have a question.
Okay.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, let me finish round one. And then let's go to you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you so much. One of the things I think that would be really helpful, Vicki, is I have noticed that sometimes our fees are not comparable to the other jurisdictions. Either they're heavily weighted or they're not weighted enough. For instance, I know one time, public records fees were outrageous, and then if you look at other fees specifically, like if I think about the appeal process in the building department, what the other jurisdictions are charging, I would love it if we could get sort of an analysis of some of those categories to be able to look at them and say, are we in comparison? Is that something you've thought about?
Yes, we typically go through that process with the departments. I don't have it documented, but we can certainly put something together and get a memo out on that.
That would be great, because I would like the council to look at those fees where maybe we can adjust so that they are more comparable and obviously fair, but at the same time, I do think that there are some where they're just really outweighed. So I think if we could get something on that to look at, and then I do think the council should weigh in on what those comparables are and where we should be aligned in the region. So thanks so much.
Sorry. Great. And then Ms. Ebert?
Thank you. This question is for Mr. Pingree. So Councilmember Martinez asked some questions about the permits expiring. Would this be just for permits going forward? What about permits that we have currently? They be kind of like grandfathered in, or would this just be for new permits that are being issued?
Chris Pingree, Director of Development Services. To help answer that question, all building permits have a shelf life of six months, 180 days, unless work has been performed. So every time that somebody calls in for a building inspection and they pass that inspection, that building permit is automatically extended for 180 days. So this would be for all permits across the board. About three years ago, we started auto-expiring permits because we had so many that were just sitting out there, people who would come in, pull a permit, and then let it expire. And we never really had a good mechanism in place to track that. So now we have that mechanism in place, that if a permit does expire, we send an inspector out there to find out if that work was actually done or it wasn't done, and then they'll get a notice letting them know that, you know, permit expired. They get a letter 30 days before, email 30 days before it expires, and they have that opportunity to do an extension at any time during that period.
Okay, so what would be the difference in the process then?
The difference in the process is just we, having the actual process of the permit technician doing that physical work to extend those permits. We had a very minimal fee to do that prior to, and as we've realized, there are a lot of folks out there, you know, you never know what the economic market could be to where somebody wants to delay that project. So there's a time and a dollar amount that it takes for our staff to actually process that.
Okay.
And let me just a follow-up on that. So what would an extension cost, then?
I want to say on that it was $123, I think.
And today, there is no cost extended?
I think it's a $41 fee now. And it's just, you know, the $41 in order to do the work, it usually takes, they've got to do the research and the homework on that before it can be automatically extended.
And then what if it's delay, I mean, it's stopped or it's terminated, but then a year later, they want to renew it or bring it up? Would that be a new one or an extension?
No, depending on, as long as we don't change a code cycle or the building codes have changed, we don't put a cap on how many extensions they can do. There's multiple reasons why they might want an extension. We just need to make sure that they're paying attention to that permit, that expiration date, and to make sure that we're following on top of it, too. It's kind of a checks and balances for both sides.
Okay. Let's see, it might be my turn now to ask a question. So I have a couple of questions. One, first, a comment. I don't know, I'm looking for Vicki, I guess she's behind you. I don't know that I'm down for an automatic CPI increase of 3.6% on all the fees and fines. I think I'm not, in fact. And the reason is, you showed us what the CPI was, and sometimes it's as low as a percent, sometimes it's as high as 6%, and I'm sure you're trying to average it, but I think that we should take a look at them, like we do annually, and not just assume this without bringing it back. So that's just my perspective. I don't know if anyone else shares that, but for people to think about. In terms of code enforcement, I'm thinking about, one, a penalty for empty properties. So if a building is just sitting there and it's been abandoned and we're having code enforcement issues, I know some cities have some kind of process where they charge a penalty for just letting a building sit, or a lot sit. Have you explored that at all?
I don't, do we have that? I know other agencies do have that, and they've explored it, but then you have to have someone out there, you know, monitoring it, and you have to have some type of a system. So I think that becomes very cumbersome for a lot of the agencies, so it's very hard to administer, but I'll defer to Alex on that.
Yes, Alex Woodley, for the record. Thank you, man. Yes, and we've looked into that before in the past. We have different states. Fortunately for us, in the state of Nevada, for lack of a better term, our development and turnover of property ownership is so positive, is so good in comparison to places like Detroit, to the point where it wouldn't really provide us the benefit that we would seek. Now, if we had a full inventory, 20, 50 structures that would just stay vacant for an extended period of time, then we would definitely pursue that, but at this point...
Well, okay, thank you. And then I guess I'm going to direct this to Mayor Sheevy. I mean, we may, maybe one approach would be to identify an area in downtown that you have worked so hard to revitalize and focus it within a few blocks of, let's say, the major part of downtown. You know, five blocks on either side, 10 blocks on either side, two blocks on either side of Virginia Street, to where there's a penalty for not doing something with your property, on the areas that matter most to city redevelopment, for example. And it's just an idea, and I don't know if this is the right time to explore it, but it seems like it might be, to both have an enforcement mechanism and a compensation for that enforcement mechanism. We could plow it right back in. Do you have a thought on that, Mayor Sheevy?
I do. I do absolutely think it should be explored. Now, Alex, you could weigh in because you're the expert on this. From what I see, when properties remain vacant, I mean, it just seems very stark, that they are not maintained nearly as well. I see overgrown weeds become fire hazards. You know, it just seems like it's a pattern of vacant properties. And I'm kind of curious, the process of, when you see that happening, Alex, I know they can still be coded, but I also wonder, are they sort of remiss in allowing those codes, those code violations to sort of pile up? Like, give me your sort of experience on some of these vacant properties. I do think Councilwoman Dorr brings up an excellent point. I would absolutely like to see something like that implemented, but tell me a little bit about your experience, Alex, and if there's some lever that sort of helps in people being more cognizant of taking care of their properties.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Alex Woodley, for the record, again. As we know, we are Dillon's rural state, and we have in the past, the city of Reno itself, we did pursue a BDR years ago at the legislature, and it did die, unfortunately, because it was pursuing that exact type of laws. So from the perspective of any legal discussion, I would have to defer to the city attorney's office, but what I can tell you is actively now, today, any code violation that we have on any property, regardless as to whether it's vacant or not, we do issue the citations, and we do issue those citations progressively. So we do ratchet up the citations up to $1,000 a day if necessary.
Okay. And I guess what I'm thinking is a spin-off of that, that really, this would be both a penalty and an incentive. Let's say it was like the sewer connection fee, where we grandfather people in for five years, and they can have a sewer down, but then reconnect it with no penalty, they don't have to repay the sewer connection fee. So that's an incentive, you know, that gives them some space to think and plan, but then if they don't work within that time, they do have to pay a sewer connection fee, okay? So what I'm wondering is, maybe there's something like that, but it's a, if you don't redevelop your property in five years, I'm just picking a number, it could be 10 or two, then there starts being on your property tax a penalty, you know, some kind of disincentive for just letting property sit and not reinvesting in the city core, is what I'm thinking.
And that was a discussion we had at the legislature.
At that time.
And their response at that time was, if I own property and the economy is terrible, why should I be penalized?
Right.
This is a long conversation.
Sure, I get it.
But that's something we can pursue and come back.
But maybe that, we give a longer time period, you know, to account for ups and downs in the economy, but still, okay.
As I understand it, we do have the city manager's offices working on some incentive programs, especially with the downtown. I don't want to talk about it here today because that's something for the future, but we have been working on something to involve both enforcement and incentives.
The other thing I wanted to ask you is, for a very long time, the whole 10 years I've been here, we've been talking about a ban of vehicles and the challenges with storing them, you know, we have to keep the, if we do tow them, we have to keep them, we have to notice the owners. It's a very long, drawn-out process. To protect property rights, we get it, but at the same time, it's a cost to the city. And I just, I'm just wondering, in our fine and fee schedule, if we could take a look at that with regard to ban of vehicle, or recast the program in such a way that we could be more effective? Because as I know, for 10 years, it's been the number-one complaint in every ward, every ward. Doesn't matter where you are in town, a ban of vehicles, whether it's cars, RVs, or whatever, remain a top complaint. And so I guess I'm looking for some kind of disincentive or some type of compensation to the city to help pay for that program.
Yes, ma'am.
Thoughts on that?
And we've looked into that as well, and that, once again, goes back to the state. This is not a title state, a car title, like in California, so typically what happens when you're dealing with an abandoned vehicle is you have an individual who no longer has interest in the vehicle, so to find or cite that vehicle, even though we do, because we do, we give them an $85 fine, unfortunately, we do not have the mechanisms statewide to pursue the last registered owner on that vehicle. But that is something that we've requested DMV to use their BDR on.
Okay. Were you trying to say, add something, Mayor?
Yeah, I just, going back to, I should be clear, not necessarily a vacancy tax. I guess I'm more concerned about, you know, the condition of properties, so I should be clear on that. So I should be clear on that, because otherwise, I think Naomi and I will end up in the press saying, oh, we want a vacancy tax. That's not what I was sort of getting at.
Correct.
What I'm getting at was, you know, when they become more abandoned, and do you typically see that, Alex, that those properties that are vacant have higher code violations than the ones that aren't?
Yes, ma'am. And we will pursue that, especially, specifically of the downtown, we do have a plan for the downtown core.
Okay. And the other thing, I think, do you have properties right now that are getting, you said $1,000 a day? And maybe, you know, there should be a list of those properties that come to council, so we know, you know, exactly which ones are problematic. You know, I, I think those are things that the council needs to dive in a little bit more, seeing those code violations. I mean, I drive by properties all the time, specifically in some of the motels that, you know, they don't have windows, they're boarded up. You know, I want to look at that process of, what does that look like whenever you go in there? I mean, I met a resident the other day in this same property, and she has no running water. And I know it's, it's very challenging, because a complaint has to come in, but these landlords do strong-arm these tenants, and they take advantage of them, and they really prey on, you know, their unfortunate circumstances. So, talk a little bit about, like, I, I just feel like there should be a top 10 list that the council should know, that are under strict scrutiny of severe code violations, because they also become hazards. They become hazards for crime, they become hazards for fire, for theft. And I, I just feel like if there's some way that this council can also send a message and help you, you know, do a better job, not that I don't think you do, I think you do, but sometimes you might need support from this council to be able to implement things that you think could be beneficial. But I'm just shocked, because I'll drive and just see, you know, certain properties and just wonder, how does this happen?
Okay, we, we can pursue that. We'll work with the city attorney's office and the city manager's office to see if that's something we can create.
Okay.
Okay, that would be great.
All right.
I think, I would like to understand, I would hope the council would be supportive of knowing, you know, which properties become the biggest hazards.
Yeah, I support you in that, Mayor. Let me go back around, I know that we, some folks maybe will have some things to add. And then our last slide is going to be on schedule, and I think that's a perfect time for us to start weighing in on some of our priorities. So, did you have further comments now, Ms. Taylor?
My question is on the special events fees. So there's a lot of new special, well, almost every single special event fee is new, and I appreciate the initiative and trying to generate revenue for the city. My question is, when, when special events come to the city and the, and ask for sponsorship, most of what they're asking for is what we give, is in-kind services. So would these fees be what they're asking for in their sponsorship packets, and would they just sort of cancel each other? Or would there actually be an opportunity to capture some revenue?
I think there's actually an opportunity to capture revenue, but I want to defer that to Lance on that one. They do ask for some sponsorships, and we do use some of the, the room tax money that the council donates to special events, to do some of that, but I do think there is an opportunity here, and Lance can probably...
Lance Ferrato for the record. So if I understand the question, you're asking if the sponsorship allocations that go to these event promoters, if, essentially to, to, to explain what you were asking, it is a, it's an in-kind sponsorship. So, anything that the city sponsors as far as, or I'm sorry, provides as far as like lane closures, police presence, things like that, that the city would provide, we can offset those costs with that sponsorship.
So are these fees part of what they could ask for in their sponsorship?
On the, on these fees specifically, in the new fee schedule, I think that the only new fees involved in that were like banners, new banners...
Yeah, there's a lot of street banner, permit fees and stuff. That's actual, they, they wouldn't be able to get, they wouldn't be able to ask for a sponsorship for that in their application.
You know, if it, if it involved the, the actual time of maintenance and operations to do that, I think that we could offset that, if they applied for it and everything was, their application was appropriate.
So let me tell you what I don't think would be good, is if we implement these fees, and then we're just waiving them with the special event sponsorship.
Right, absolutely, yeah. And that, I think, goes along with the application process and the vetting through the committee, for everybody to say, yeah, that's not what this is intended for. So I, I think we have a catch-all there.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, anyone else for this section? Yes, Mr. Martinez.
Thanks so much, Madam Vice Mayor. I have a question about the park and rec sliding fee schedule. I don't know if Director Uliya is here, give him a moment to come up. But basically, I was just asking to see if you can explain the sliding fee schedule and how you're going to propose to do the calculation of income.
Thank you for the question, Mayor and Council. Still, it's the afternoon, good afternoon. Happy to answer some of those questions. I'm really excited to use the overhead for the first time, so if we can tune that up... No, we can't. Don't do that to me. Essentially, what we're trying to do, as that's pulling up, is, we do currently have a membership model for our programs and in our fees. It's a mostly paid and full model, which requires folks to pay for a full quarter of the year, or a whole year, at one time, which is, in my mind, excluding people who are unable to do so. So, the sliding scale fits in, we would like to move to a monthly kind of EFT model. Is that pulling up? No? Still working on it. Move to that monthly EFT model, electric fund transfer, electronic funds transfer, where it would automatically do that. And then the sliding scale would provide that accessibility for a low monthly fee that they would pay, rather than have to pay all of that upfront. So, I've got some things to illustrate that as soon as we get that pulled up, but what it could mean is...
And I want to make sure, can Mayor Sheevy see that, is this being broadcast? I just want to make sure. Yes?
Yeah, I don't think it, my slides aren't up yet, though, right?
Well, this is it.
It's up on some, hold on.
One sec.
Okay. But, so, a good example would be if a standard fee is $15, then if a youth, a youth is at the poverty level, they would be able to get a monthly membership for as little as $3. And then there's a scale between 3, 6, 9, 12, and 15. Okay, so here we go. So the goal, the goal is to move towards a sustainable model that allows us to charge a fee that would be possible or comparable to the private sector on similar services, but then to maintain accessibility. As you can see on the bottom half of that slide, that's where I was talking about, if at the highest rate, which would be, you know, above the 400 percentile of poverty, it'd be $60 for an adult, but that could go as low as $12 per month for an adult. And then you can see the youth fee there at 15 per month with as low as $3. So, let me show you what the scale looks like.
And let me ask, you're, you'll put these, you'll post these on our website?
Absolutely, yeah. We need to advertise this and get the information to folks so they understand it. So this is, this is a table of the scale there, where you can see the household family size...
So are we doing that on purpose, we're making the sliding scale sliding? Is that what we're doing?
This is the club version of the overhead.
Okay. Could we actually zoom in a little more to get a bigger view? There we go.
All right, so you can see on the, the far left column there, the household family size, going down 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, all the way to 8. Goes down to 16, so we're there for everybody. But on the discount amount, kind of row there is the discount they would receive off the price, and the percentage above that on family size row is the poverty level. So at 100% or poverty level, based on the federal standard, and 200%, 300%, and 400%. So those are the amounts of household income you could, that you would qualify under?
I'm, I'm sorry, Nathan, I don't understand this slide at all. Could you try again?
So this is, this is just explaining the household size versus household income, and what percentage off you could receive.
But are you saying you'd get, what is the 400%?
400% of the poverty level. So if you, if a household of four people, if your household income was $120,000 a year, then that is 400% of the poverty level. So that's a cutoff.
But what does it mean?
So what would you be paying?
Yeah.
Sure. So you would get 20% off of $60, so for an individual, it'd be $48 a month. So I'll go back to this piece here. So, and that, that rate at 6, so 60, and then, so in between, it, it's basically a $12 increment of a discount. So at 20% off, you'd be paying 48. At 40% off, you'd be paying, don't make me math, 36. And then, at the next, at the next phrase, it would be 24, and then all the way down to 12.
We need a slide on that.
Okay, sure. Well, to give you an example, so here are some current average salaries that we pulled up, and this gives you an example of what they would pay for, for a family of, a household of three, a single parent with two would pay that amount. So, it's all based on your household size and your income, so that's why it's called a sliding scale. So it's not going to be the same for every, every person, unless you're above the 400%. Sorry, I know that's a little confusing.
Yeah, thank you for that explanation. I did have another question on something else, if I can move on...
Yeah.
...with my time, just because we're a little bit over. But I was wondering about the individual residential parking signage fee, it's increasing by $327. So I'm just wondering about, yeah, that, we were, we're going from about $35 to $350 on that fee, and just trying to figure out why we're doing that.
Sure. Kerry Koski, you're Director of Public Works. That particular fee there is based on just, on what it costs to install the parking, individual parking permit and the materials only. So, when that fee was originally put into place years ago, it hasn't been changed for as long as inception that I know of. We worked with our maintenance and operations folks, and it takes about two and a half hours to install the posts and the signs, the materials, and, and that's why we're asking for that fee in case, that's, it's just, we're not making anything on it. And, and the individual parking permit sign is a, is lifetime sign for as long as you own the, the property.
And is there an application fee included with that, or is it just that signage fee?
Nope, that's it, just the signage.
To go in there. Okay. And will this affect folks who live in like the residential zones that we approved just west of the university, if they haven't gotten their signs installed yet, or are those pre these updates?
No, these will be for new, new applicants, and they are for just ADA, accessibility, and for retired. What's the other word? ADA?
ADA, and senior citizens.
And, excuse me, not retired, senior citizens, who, who do not have the parking available for them at their residence.
Could you say more about that, though? What is that?
So, Kurt, do you want to come up? I'm going to let our traffic engineer explain it. I'm struggling.
For the record, Kurt Dietrich, City Traffic Engineer, and I'm sorry, what was the question?
Well, what is the ADA, what is the senior citizen? Is it a different thing than a handicap spot?
Slightly different. So the IRP is actually tied to the resident, so...
What's IRP?
Oh, Individual Resident Parking. And so that signage is actually tied to the address, so we'll say parking for this address only, whereas an ADA spot would be more handicap parking for general use. That's the primary difference.
But we have something called senior citizen parking that you apply for a permit? That's not ADA?
No, it's slightly different. So the IRP is if you don't have enough off-street parking spaces, and, but however, there was changes a number of years ago, where it's only available for senior citizens and for ADA reasons.
Okay.
I just have one quick comment, if I may.
Okay, please.
Yeah, the only reason I bring this up is because I think we're going to continue to see density in our areas, and when we are near single resident families, single residential units in our city, then we have to take those things into consideration, and the increase was just pretty high in my eyes, so I just wanted to make sure I got clarification on that justification. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Well, it seems like we could actually step into it without going to full cost recovery in one year, in my opinion, but that might be a way to mitigate the impact. Ms. Ebert, you had a comment?
Yeah, yeah, this is actually for Director Parks and Rec. So, your sheet with the, the pricing that, you know, we had some back and forth literally on, if we could get, I won't be able to tell it on the screen. Can we get it shown? The other one with the table of the incomes. Can we get the actual, like, family cost, so we have the salary here, but if we could just get like maybe another column that shows like what it would actually cost, so like your, your family of five at 80% discount, what it would cost, just one more row of that?
Absolutely, yeah. If, Nathan Ollie for the record, Parks and Recreation Director, whatever you'd like to see, to see where those breakdowns exist, we can absolutely do that.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be great, because I know you have some like spot examples on that other sheet, but I think it would be helpful to see, you know, actual numbers along with this. Like, here's what the income would be, but here's what your actual price would be per family.
Right, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, I think, Madam Mayor, any final comments on this section? Okay, hearing none. Why don't we go back to our last slide? And what I want to ask the team, we, we've had a request to break for lunch. I don't know how much input you have on the budget. I have some things to say, but I'm sure we all do. What, what's the temperature of the group? What would you like to do? I mean, in other words, do you want to take a 15-minute break? Do you want to continue power through? What, could, could you give me some input?
Madam Vice Mayor, my only concern is we've got a lot of staff, and so, but I also don't want to limit any of my colleagues' comments. If we can be done here in the next 20 minutes, I think we can all probably hold out.
I thought we could, but I know people were having grumbling stomachs, and what's that? A five? But if you promise to come back on five. Okay, I'm willing to break for five, coming back on five, that's a little bathroom break, but that gives us a little chance to get our proposals in. Okay. So, let's present this, and then we're going to take a five-minute break.
Perfect.
Councilwoman Doer?
Yeah.
Really quick, one minute. I want to make sure that we, there, you know, there are still some questions that are outstanding and are priorities, so I do want to make sure we schedule another special meeting to make sure that everything that staff has asked for us, that we have a clear understanding, because we also have a council member out, and I also value her opinion. So I want to just make sure that you request some time in a special meeting to make sure that we get all of our priorities and staff's priorities as well, so we're all on the same page. Right now, there's a lot of discussion, but I still am not hearing concrete answers.
Right, I think we've asked staff, great point, Mayor Sheevy, I think we've asked staff to come back with additional information that will help us make decisions later. And we want to know what some things look like, give us some more detail, give us some numbers instead of percentages, even on our income, even on the base budget, the, the maintenance budget, the fees, et cetera. So that's what you're getting at, and then also maybe a more detailed discussion on what we're looking for in the budget? Is that what you're thinking?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, so we'll do your thing, we'll take a five-minute break, we're going to come back with what we're proposing for our priorities, generally, and then I expect more discussion at this next meeting. Okay? All right.
So this just gives you an idea of what's coming up as far as prepping for the budget. So based on the comments and the priorities that we hear today, we'll go back and sharpen our pencils and try to figure out ways to maybe fund things different ways. If we have other funding sources that we can potentially use for some of these things, we will do that. And we will also have revenues, we'll have some more data points for revenues, we'll still be working on those in the interim, to try to make sure we can accommodate some requests and do some things even with a flat budget, so that is our priority moving forward. We'll come back on the May 1st with the budget workshop at that point, to really give you an idea of where those revenues are tracking at that point. We will have final numbers from the state at that point, and we'll really have an idea of what we can and can't do based on the priorities that you give today. And then, obviously, you could give new priorities, too, then, if something else comes up, we can look at it at that point, too.
New priorities when, on this?
On May 1st.
Okay.
Because budget adoption occurs on May 22nd, so we are still in that prep, draft[1799.33] mode up until that point. So even on that May 1st, if there are new priorities or things change a little bit, absolutely, those can be considered at that point.
Okay. Did you give us the whole schedule here?
And then May 22nd will be the public hearing, so that is the final adoption date at that point and the fee schedule. Our budget's due to taxation on June 1st, so once council adopts it, it goes to taxation, and then our new fiscal year begins on July 1st.
Okay. Okay, any questions on this schedule? I think we have one. Mayor Sheevy just asked for a special workshop before April 15th.
May 1st would be the next workshop.
I know, but she just asked for, I believe, I want to confirm, but she just asked for a special follow-up to this meeting. Is that correct, Mayor Sheevy?
Well, an entire wrap-up of everything, because I want to make sure that we're getting everything on this budget that we want to, because I know there's a lot of different priorities. Like, right now, I could like jump into special events and go off for 30 minutes and those kinds of things, and I don't want to do that. I want to be respectful of everyone's time, so that's where I think that we, seeing this budget for the first time, it makes you start to think, hey...
So you cut out there. I don't know if we lost you. Let me ask the clerk. It's still there? Okay, but we're just not hearing. Oh, there you are.
So that's all I'm saying is I want to make sure that we have a final wrap-up, and that could be at the end, but it's got to be before we adopt.
So are you comfortable with the next workshop being May 1st, which is in about six weeks?
No, I think we should have one before to wrap up on this and have sort of a checklist of the discussion topics, so that, you know, unless you feel that you're getting enough feedback from us.
Well, I personally think it'd be useful. It doesn't, it won't be a whole day. I think it would be an hour or two at the most, but a check-in while they're revising this budget, I think would be good.
I do.
Maybe in three weeks or something?
Can I just interject here for a minute?
Of course you can.
We won't really have any new revenues at that point. I mean, I won't have a new presentation between now and May 1st, because I need that time to really refine revenues and such. So nothing on like for finance side is really going to change between now and May 1st, but obviously, we could hear a lot more priorities and things if you want me to come back and just listen to priorities and kind of go through that again. But I won't really have anything really new to tell you at that point.
Right, but you did say March 25th, I believe, that you would be getting some projections?
Yes, we'll have property tax projections at that point, yes.
So that's at least one new data point?
Yes.
Okay. So Mayor Sheevy...
But I hope it gives the council enough time to sort of, I guess, ponder some of these, you know, priorities, because like I said, I think, you know, there's a lot that I'm starting to think about, and I think council should bring those back, because right now, you're hearing sort of where staff's head is going, and I'm not so sure we're weighing in on the capacity of which we're ready to do so.
Right.
I hope that makes sense.
Yeah. Are you looking, are you thinking, let's just say it wasn't Monday. Are you thinking April 1st, or are you thinking April 8th, maybe?
I'll have to check with Brian, but I definitely think that we should have, and we can make it short. I think we can do it in an hour, but I want council to define exactly what they want to see out of these priorities that she's presented today.
Right. No, I agree. And so maybe April 8th is in about three weeks. I mean, that might give us all time to mull on what we've learned, ask more questions, and come back with sort of some additional thoughts. So just consider it and maybe propose something back to us, okay? All right. Well, listen, what I'd like to do, it's almost quarter of, I'd like us to come back in, we'll just say at 10 of 1, so that we can give our final input for this session. So we're having a bathroom break, whatever, including staff. You've been all sitting for a really long time, so we have maybe a half hour more to go, I would say, to give everybody a couple rounds.
I just want to remind you, we have RDA coming up after this, too.
There's more?
Yes.
More presentation?
Yes, for the redevelopment agency.
This I didn't realize?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I have it, but didn't realize. It's not very big.
It should be fairly quick.
Okay. All right. So with that, I'm actually going to modify. I'm going to say 5 of 1. I just want everybody back in their seat, okay? Okay, well, we're in recess till 5 minutes of 1. All right. We're going to come back off our recess. Thank you, everyone, for your indulgence. I'm sure the staff benefited from that as well, because you've been all on point for, you know, several hours, almost three hours. So do you want to pick us up? We're going to do the RDA.
And Madam Mayor, or Madam Vice Mayor, just for the record, it is 12:58, and Councilmember Martinez and Mayor Sheevy are absent at this time.
Okay. We still have a quorum, so we're going to push through. Okay.
So now we're at a point, Vicki Van Buren, Director of Finance, for the record, we are at a point where any council priorities, things that you would like to see in the budget, things you would like to see for the next workshop, information that you need, now's the time to let us know that, so that we can start working on those items and work in that direction.
Okay. So let me, I was going to start with Mayor Sheevy on this. Okay, so let me, I was gonna start with Mayor Shivi on this, but since she's not online, we'll go back in the order that we've been. So, I'm gonna call on Councilmember Taylor. Do you want to just sort of share with us some of your thoughts on the budget?
Sure. And I tried to be as organized in the thoughts that I possibly could at this point with the information that we have. So, I broke what my priorities are into now, near, and far. And these priorities are coming from what I hear from my constituents and the calls for service that we get. So, in the now category, the number one thing that I hear is code enforcement and parking. And I'm looking for the team to help us figure out what or who is the best person or finance strategy to get there. So, parking, and we already heard about it, abandoned vehicles, RVs, that is the number one complaint. So, how do we work with that moving forward in the now timeframe? The second thing I hear, and this is probably not gonna be very popular, but it's from people from all over and in our calls for service, is the nuisance crimes, the homeless, the unsheltered, the RMCs that are not being adhered to in our parks, on our streets, and in our city, are causing a great deal of concern for the community. And what I mean is, it's, I don't know if it's RPD, I don't know if it's the bid, I don't know who is responsible for this, but when people call, they get a non, they have to go to the non-emergency number, and it takes, there's not enforcement in that space. And again, I'm not, I don't know if it's RPD, but I would love to see if we can allocate some resources to getting that taken care of. The third thing, and in the now, is a bar car. My constituents talked about some of the noise and the loitering going on downtown at night on the streets, not necessarily businesses, but, and I know there's different enforcement, I think there was a SAS team or something like that, but something that's more regular. In the near future, one of the things I heard from constituents was getting the Reno Arch lit in a sustainable way, so some of the lights are out, it might be a one-time capital project. And then, this is probably in the far, City Center is a huge blight downtown. I don't know what the city can do as far as helping move that project along, but if we can do screening, if we can do something to deter from the shape that that's in until it gets rebuilt, that would be a win. In the far term, I just have two more things.
And you can take extra time. I want each person to take up to even four or five minutes, you know, to kind of tell us what you're thinking.
So, in the far term, looking towards the goal of fiscal sustainability, I'd like to see, see tax and property tax, just something to make sure that we, the city of Reno, is getting paid for the services that they provide. That's the short of it. And then sewer fund, I love the affordability that we have in the sewer fund for sewer tax credits. I don't know if that's gonna be something that we'll be able to sustain in the future, but I'm very interested in learning about that, because I think that's the number three thing I hear from our constituents is affordability. And at the city, I think that's actually something that we can help with at our level. So, thank you, Madam Vice Mayor, I appreciate that.
Yeah, sure. How about you, Mr. Martinez?
Thank you so much. I will not try to repeat some of the stuff that I agree with Councilwoman Taylor on, especially when it comes to fiscal sustainability and investing in code enforcement. I definitely have to agree with those needs from our communities, from what I hear, speaking to constituents. I think, in line with what Councilmember Reese said as well, looking at making investments into our parks and recreation and open space and doing those, looking at different ways to pull all of our funding sources together, or different buckets that we have, to make those investments for our community. I think a lot of times, our community members, that's the only place that they have to get away from their day-to-day grind, I'll call it, and have sort of a safe haven to be able to take their families. I do appreciate all the smart and forward-thinking investments that you're proposing to us, to be able to, in the long term, benefit from paying off some of our debt and maybe capitalizing on some of those efforts. So, wherever we can, investing in our parks and recreation, public safety, and providing economic opportunities for our community, I think that's stuff that I want to prioritize during this budget season, so, thank you.
Okay, very good. And we'll go to Councilmember Reese. I know you started, but I want to give you another opportunity to kind of elaborate.
Yeah, I don't know that my priorities have changed. In the five years that I've been in council, they've been pretty much consistently the same, and I think we're doing good work in these areas. So, I'll just reiterate, one is public safety, our core competency and mission as a city, and certainly the functions of a city, the Charter Committee requires us to maintain those. And, you know, the mayor has consistently said, a safe city is a prosperous city. So, I think that's an important component for me. I am interested in looking at, and perhaps is something I can take up with Chief Nance, about looking at the ways in which we can bring public safety into each of the wards. I think each one of us, because I'm the at-large member, I see the city in an entirely different way, and so each person may be advocating for very specific things that are related to their ward function. And so, for my part, I want to make sure that we have continued safety in all wards of the city. The second thing is our parks and recreation services, parks and pools, we'll call it. I think we've been doing as best a job we can with the budget we have. I think, long term, we've got to find out a more sustainable path for our parks and recreation services, because the number one concern that I hear by folks is about making sure we have access to great parks and recreational facilities. And then, the last thing is kind of the grab-bag of all the things, priorities for things like the Lear Theater, things that happen to engage downtown revitalization efforts. As we continue to improve our downtown core, I think that touches on a lot of things Councilmember Taylor talked about, in terms of, you know, services downtown and making sure that we have, you know, a river that is vibrant, and parks touch on that as well. So, and those are the issues. Again, I know that the budget is, you know, a lot of it is our people, and so, from year to year, I want to make sure that we're prioritizing our employees, making sure we've met their needs, and continue to grow appropriately as we can, knowing that, I don't know that I've ever been here when we haven't had a flat budget. The budget's pretty consistent over time. I don't see us as having some huge spike some year where we're gonna then be allocating all these resources that we didn't previously have. So, it's incrementalism, and I'm okay with that being the case. I think if we have a five-year prioritization, which we do through some of our different planning processes, it leads the discussion very easily. So, no new fancy toys for me, just want to make sure that we consistently are supporting the items that I think we've consistently said we want to support, so, thank you.
Great. Ms. Seabird?
I also, like Councilmember Reese and Taylor, agree that public safety is a very important priority, but I do realize that this is one-time funds, so it might not be enough to add, you know, another unit to the police force, though I wish it was, something that we could do ongoing, but there's just no guarantee that we would have this funds, these funds in the future. So, that's important to me, but I feel like we have a PROS plan we adopted, that I think that we could use some of these funds towards, I think that would be a really great use of these funds to help with our parks and rec department. But I also think that we might, it might be wise to use some of those funds to fund our OPEB trust account, just to kind of speed us up in fully funding that account. I think that that would be a great benefit to the city. So, again, just public safety as a priority, but I'm not sure, you know, how long-term these funds could affect that. But also, I think that funding the fire station would be a great idea, if we could use that money towards that, I think that would also be a wise use of funds.
Okay, great. Mayor Shivi, I don't know if you're on. Okay, well, we're gonna need to hear from Mayor Shivi. So, if she does not opine in this meeting, I'm gonna ask you specifically to get with her and sit with her, set up a meeting, and specifically find out what she would like to see in the budget, okay?
Absolutely.
As for me, very similar to my colleagues, with a few little, maybe twists. I too am very focused on public safety, have been all the way through. I know that we've made some good investments last time, is what I recall. So, some things I'm thinking about are not necessarily more police, but tools that will help them do better policing. And what I'm thinking about, I had a few cases that came up in my own neighborhood and nearby neighborhoods, where the real issue was not a lack of staff, it was data management. They were not able to take the data of reported crime and be able to synthesize that and be able to deploy their resources where there was likely crime. And so, I think that we could really benefit from, I know that Chief Nance is already on this path, but I want to support her in this. I want to make sure that, for example, the person that's, I don't know their definite title, but they're in charge each evening, let's say. What is it called?
Watch commander.
Yes, I was, exactly. The watch commander doesn't seem to have information from previous nights, for example, or previous shifts, to the extent that they could actually deploy resources where the hits are coming, whether it's breaking entering, whether it's people wandering the streets, I've heard that complaint, just going into homes, not into homes, but into yards, those kind of things, like where those are happening, so that they can understand. And there came in, a related issue was that I found out that when people make 911 calls, unless they actually, each call is assigned a number, and unless they actually have the number of their call, then it's hard for our police department to aggregate calls that are on the same incident from different people. And it's just another aspect of this data management. So, the data's coming in either from calls, or from individuals, or from 911, and being able to aggregate that and then deploy our resources, I think would really, really help our police. Number two in the public safety arena for me, I think folks know that there's a project in South Reno, it's a public safety project to fence horses from people, so that we have far fewer car crashes. So, we've had something on the order of, in just the last four years, something like 45 car crashes, just due to horses wandering. And so, I want to make sure if we don't have enough ARPA money for the fencing, that we consider putting that in the capital program to complete the project. I too am very focused on parks, it probably is my number one that I hear, and I want to make sure that we have a capital program to patch the paths, possibly, in the future, might not be this year, but I'm looking at a parks planner. We've been talking about it the whole 10 years, I've been on council, is that there is no person left in parks that plans future parks, or plans the future of existing parks, and they need that person, they do. And then, the PROS plan laid out a lot of issues particularly related to maintenance, and I think we need to make sure that we've figured out how we're gonna continue keeping our parks up, because we all know that if we don't take care of something, it will just degrade, that's an asset for our community, and many people are relying on it. And as part of the parks, I'd like to bring the trees in for a landing this year, whether that's the tree ordinance, tree fines, proper tree appraisals. And I understood we hired a staff, but we, just as we had a huge impact in the historic resources arena, we talked about at council, that by having a person, we are doing a much better job of identifying historic resources and bringing them to council. Similarly, unless we have a number-two person with our urban forester, or a person over in planning, to do this tree work, it's just gonna be status quo. So, I feel like we need to take a next step. And then, finally, for me, is code enforcement. We were just talking about some ideas, but I really think this is the year, possibly, to make a step, whether that is in parking enforcement, whether that is in the towing, revising our process, and also making our fines stick. At the break, I asked our manager, I said, "Well, our code enforcement officer said that he can charge $1,000 a day." But I said, "But do we? And does that stick?" And it sounds like the hearing officers may waive some of these fines, so we don't ever really get to a place where that's meaningful. And so, maybe we need to look at our hearing officer processes and our code enforcement processes and how those are marrying up. I think I've hit most of the things. There's probably some more adds, but, you know, we have future conversations as well. And then, I want to check in one more time to see if Mayor Shivi's online. It sounds like no, so, again, I'm gonna ask you to get with her specifically, and it looks like, Mr. Reese, you would like to add?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. I want, perhaps, to put something out there for my colleagues, and perhaps this would be something that's Van Buren, you can help us with. OPEB is a very complex and, well, I'll call it a difficult concept, right? I think most of us have a concept in our mind, but it probably does not match up with what it is. And I'm just gonna suggest that we bring in either some expertise from outside that would help us to understand the way in which actuarial data comes to bear in how we pay down that liability, because, like, by analogy, I would just say, many of us have a mortgage, and we have a 30-year mortgage, and so, we don't really own the home until the end of that 30-year period, and we pay it off, you know, consistently over time. And of course, the sooner you put money towards it, like, I know people who can afford to maybe make an extra payment a year, which then shaves off a certain number of years on your mortgage. It would be worth, I think, having a discussion at a higher level to help everyone understand what that liability is, in part because we've made some priorities over the last couple of years, we have not funded it, although it's always a choice, right? Whether we fund it to the level which would allow us to pay it off at some future point in time. I sort of was looking at the numbers that you posited today and thought, you know, if we put $2 million a year into it for 10 years, it would free up, like, let's just say, $12 million in the general fund. And I know my numbers are not correct, but the point being is, we need to have a philosophical discussion about what is the OPEB, what is the unfunded liability in it, why does it matter, who does it matter to, our employees, how is the pay-go model being sustained? There is, I think, one or two entities statewide, I know the county and maybe the North Lake Tahoe Fire Protection District have paid off their unfunded liabilities, they've reached the maximum amount that they can pay into their trusts for the purpose of it. But I do think it's just worth it, because, for example, my preference this year would be not to pay anything into it again, but then make a commitment in other years to make incremental adjustments to it. I think in down-budget years, we get creative about where we rob Peter to pay Paul from, and it seems easiest, of course, to me at times, to talk about the OPEB liabilities. I also think there's a philosophical conversation to be had about whether or not current generations of persons, meaning those taxpayers now, are paying for future generations of stuff, and then will not have the same concomitant responsibility. And so, I do think it's important to pay it down, I just think, I don't believe it has to be aggressively done, because it is always gonna be a place where we're going to have variances in actuarial information as people retire and as people age out of the system. I just think there's something there, there, that would benefit us to maybe bring in some kind of outside expertise, to give some knowledge about, are we on the right track? I mean, what are we doing with it? What does actuarial data say? Because I don't want to fund it if it's not necessary in this particular calendar year.
Okay. Let me ask, open for another round, Ms. Taylor, anything, Mr. Martinez? Let me ask you, Mr. Martinez, you were asked some very poignant questions about the fines and the fees, do you, do you want to give any guidance to the staff about that area?
Sure, yeah, I appreciate the opportunity to clarify some of that. I do think that, especially when it comes to the individual residential parking signage fee, I know, and I understand the need to cover our costs on that, but if there was a way to do sort of a step up to the $350 proposal, I think that would help me better support that.
Okay, great. Okay, that's helpful. Ms. Seabird, anything to add?
Okay, I have two things to add. One is, I wanted to support Ms. Seabird's comment about the 10 million. I do think that we should at least make some investment in moving our fire headquarters forward. I don't know what that looks like, I mean, I have a feeling we're gonna have to use some of this to fund some emergent issues, but I do think, even if it's, let's say, 3 million of the 10 million, wherever that gets us... million of the ten million, wherever that gets us, I mean, we don't want to have this project language, languish. But we have also gone into debt, right? I mean, it's part of the, the sixty million dollar issuance that we did, I think a certain amount was for planning.
Only two million for the design, yes.
Right. Okay, so I think, you know, maybe we need to take the next steps.
Okay.
And the second thing is, and this is again, we took some really good steps on the early part of my time on council to come up with a sustainability plan, but we have never been able to take the next step and actually put those thoughts, words, and plan into action. And I'm thinking about things like this. The MV Energy franchise is coming up, and we should be taking a hard look at it in terms of where do we want to take that? How do we work together with our partner on sustainability initiatives? The other one that's going to be coming up within it two years is the Waste Management franchise, I think twenty twenty-eight, we're at twenty twenty-four, but we've got to start thinking about what amendments we want and doing the research, whether that's composting, hazardous waste recycling, e-waste recycling, all of those things. It's a very big contract, and it takes a long time to review it and to revise it and to arrive at agreement prior to its expiration. So we've got to, there's going to be a point at which we go out to bid, and so in order to go out to bid, we're going to have to decide what we want in that contract, and that's all part of the sustainability. And there are obviously many other aspects to the sustainability. We've had a team in here, every council meeting, for like the last ten council meetings, of people that care about the environment and climate change, they keep coming and attending, and I don't want to miss their message. And I think one of their messages to us would be, we should implement our sustainability plan. Okay?
Okay.
All right. All right, any, Ms. Ebert, you had something?
Sorry, I did want to chime in again, and this is to Councilmember Duer's point about the importance of trees and the climate activists that come in and speak. I just wanted to put on the record that Ward Four has the lowest tree canopy in the entire city of Reno at five percent. We also, according to the FEMA maps, have very high temperature increase. I just want to say how important it is for, for me, that the entire city of Reno has as many trees and green spaces as possible, but also in particular, Ward Four has the greatest need for tree canopy, and I know that we've accepted two grants that I can think of off the top of my head during my time on council that were for other areas in the city of Reno outside of Ward Four, which is great, Reno needs trees. But part of the hurdles that, that I'm dealing with in Ward Four in, in providing those resources is a lack of infrastructure, meaning water.
Yeah, irrigation.
Irrigation. So if we can use some of these funds in the PROS plan and in parks and RAC to make it so that we can increase the tree canopy in, in the part of Reno that, that most desperately needs it, because we've, you know, made commitments to try and help with warming in the city of Reno, and we want to work to do what we can to help with the climate change in the city of Reno, Ward Four has a tremendous need for that. So just wanted to reiterate that, Councilmember Duer reminded me of that when she talked about, you know, climate change and the need for trees. So I'm just wanting to put that on the record. Thank you.
Good. And just as a side note, I think that is very true, and that is one reason that we are, just for everyone's information, planning to hold Arbor Day in Ward Four, we're also planning our very next tree planting to be in Ward Four with fruit trees, I think, and other trees, two different parks, is what I understand. So Urban Forestry's been working on that, message received.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so there was, I think, I wanted to make a mention, when we talk about parks maintenance, I'm going to just give a very concrete example, so we're not all vague. There's been a pending project for ten years at Virginia Lake, which is to stabilize the bank. The bank is sloughing in, it's causing water pollution, it is eating away at the trees on the West Bank, it is eating away, it will soon be eating away at the path. And so we've got to figure out a way to, it's a perfect example of, we have an asset decaying, and we've got to take the steps to reinforce that asset and not have the trees fall in, the bank fall in, the water pollution start up again. And so I want to make sure, that's just a concrete example when we talk about parks maintenance, it's been on the list for a long time. Okay? All right, well, we're going to close out this section and give it back to you to take us through the redevelopment.
Could I ask one more question on the fees, the RMC, those codes? Is that something that council wants to pursue as far as removing those and putting them on the fee schedule? Because if so, that, that process needs to happen pretty quickly for us to adopt that on May twenty-second, so that would have to come forward pretty quickly, so I just want to make sure that...
Well, I'm going to raise my hand, yes. I see hands raising.
Okay.
Okay, so I think there's general support for that.
Thank you.
So Madam Vice Mayor, if we can just close out the Reno City Council meeting so we can open RDA.
Sure.
So I'm going to move on to item H1, which is City Council comments.
I do not see any City Council comments.
Okay. Item J1 is closing public comment, we do not have, I have not received any, and we do not have anyone registered. If anyone is in the Zoom meeting who would like to make closing public comment, please raise your hand at this time. Okay, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the Reno City Council meeting.
All right, I have a motion from Councilmember Reese, second from Councilmember Martinez. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, and the Reno Council is adjourned. And now we will open up the Reno Redevelopment Agency section. I think we do not need to pledge to the flag again. Could you take roll call, please?
Give me just a second to get us transitioned over. All right, Madam Vice Mayor, thank you. So we're moving on to item A2 of the Redevelopment Agency Board, which is roll call. Councilmember Breckus absent at this time. Duer?
Here.
Martinez?
Here.
Ebert?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Reese?
Sheevy?
Absent at this time. Madam Vice Mayor, you do have a quorum of the Redevelopment Agency Board, and it is one twenty-seven.
Okay, is there any public comment for this meeting?
I do not have any registered. If you're a participant in the Zoom meeting, please raise your hand at this time. And just for the record, members of the public may here, observe, and provide public comment virtually by registering through the following link, which can be found on reno.gov/meetings, https://links.reno.gov/ Madam Vice Mayor, we can close out, opening public comment.
All right, and I'm looking for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion from Mr. Reese, second from Mr. Martinez. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We now have approval of the minutes, and we do have minutes from the November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting.
Move to approve.
All right, I have a motion from Mr. Reese, second from Ms. Taylor. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. There are no public hearings, this agenda, and then we're back to item C, Department Items Finance. Back to you.
Good afternoon. Vicky Van Buren, Director of Finance. This should be fairly quick on this part. It's just to give you an update of where we're at on the redevelopment agencies. The city has two. Redevelopment Area Number One is mostly downtown, in the downtown corridor, and then redevelopment Area Two is spread out around town on about seven different areas. So the yellow area is redevelopment Number One, and redevelopment Number Two is the pink area on your map. If you go to redevelopment one, this shows you a Zoom-in portion of that to show you the downtown area where this is impacted. This redevelopment area was established in nineteen eighty-three, and it expires in twenty forty-three. It is not eligible under current NRS to be extended anymore. This would be the end of it versus, if there are no other changes to NRS. It is the downtown area with that parking garage that is on Sierra Street, the garage is managed by Colliers. The revenues that come in to that are pledged to debt if there are any excess revenues over the expenditures for things that have to be repaired or done within the garage. We have a fixed amount of motor vehicle privilege tax that was given to RDA One when it was established, and it just continues at that same amount every year, it's about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And then in miscellaneous expenses, we have repairs to the garage, which would be maintenance on the garage, the gates and such, painting, I think, was one of the items they did one year as well. In the RDA One, there are some bonds that were issued a long time ago to build out various projects, and those bonds actually mature in just a few years, in twenty twenty-seven. There are two, there's a general fund and a debt fund for each redevelopment area. This is redevelopment area Number One's general fund. What's included in here is the motor vehicle privilege tax, and then the parking gallery rent, and then the expenses for the parking gallery. There's really nothing else that is impacted in here. When we go to RDA One Debt Fund, this is where the property taxes actually flow into for the RDA One, and the property taxes historically have not been enough since the expiration of that two thousand and eighteen agreement, since that time to pay for the debt service in here. So we have been eating away at some of the cash balances in here to pay some of that debt up until recently, where it's getting really close to the amount that we need to come in to pay that debt. So you'll notice for fiscal year twenty-five, up there, we have ad verum taxes, which is property tax of almost three million dollars, and then we have total of expenses about two point nine. So that's really the first year, which would be next year, to where we're actually finally being able to cover what we have in debt service. Some of the cash balances that we've had in the past are sale of properties and such, and that we've used those funds to pay the debt service in this time. We also took a loan from RDA Two in fiscal year twenty-two in order to keep it afloat until these bonds pay out in twenty-seven, and so that loan was one point two million dollars. We do anticipate that this will be paid back in either twenty-six or twenty-seven, back to RDA Two. So if you look at the tax increment coming in, so this is a tax increment in RDA One, and I left the actuals on this one for twenty-three, just so you could see that it is growing, that tax increment is really growing in that area. But we do have that big outstanding debt that's still there until twenty twenty-seven, so there's really not a lot we can do with RDA One at this point until those pay off. You'll see the line, that's the debt service line, that blue line, once that pays off and goes to zero in twenty-seven, then all of that increment would be available to do projects and things going forward, but right now, there's really no capacity within RDA One. If you see out in twenty thirty-six, that is this RDA One taking on the baseball agreement, that's a million dollars a year. So RDA Two is currently paying the baseball agreement, and when that expires in twenty thirty-five, RDA Two ends earlier. When that ends, RDA One would have to take on that debt. That's why you see that dip and then coming back up. Now, RDA Two is this pink area, so you can see it's kind of spread out, it's got some area over there by Boomtown as well. It was established in two thousand and five, it expires, like I said, in twenty thirty-five, and again, this one is not eligible to be extended either under the current NRS. We've extended it as many times as we can. So there are seven different areas, the property tax revenues fully cover the baseball agreement. Baseball agreement is the only thing in here, aside from a very small debt that was done for the Cabela's, they call it the museum, the museum that's in there for the animals and such that are in there, because the city owns that. So if we go on to the, again, it has a general fund and it has a debt fund in here. So the general fund, all of the, the taxes for property tax are coming in here, so you'll see there's a lot of property tax coming in here, because it has come online, just like RDA One, but RDA One has all of that debt associated with it, RDA Two does not. So it's actually come on a little faster as far as the revenue's increasing in RDA Two area. So the baseball agreement is the biggest thing in here, we did give that loan, one point two million, to RDA One back in fiscal year twenty-two, but at the end of this year, we're, end of next year, so, sorry, end of next year, we're projecting we'll have around eighteen million dollars in RDA Two. So we're building, it's building up over time at this point, because we have excess property tax in there. One of the things that I would recommend is thinking about for the next round when we come back in our workshop is using a portion of this funding that we have in RDA Two to do the site work and the demolition work and such for the new fire station. So because of the location of the fire station, there is a nexus for it to be paid, could be paid RDA One, RDA Two, supported, but I think there's a good, there's a good opportunity here to get ahead of the debt financing that eventually will happen, will need to happen for the fire station. So we're saving money as we go along, and then if we could go ahead and do the demolition and the site work, anticipating that would be around ten million dollars. So just getting out ahead of that, in front of it, while the planning's done, and then you're ready to go at the point that that's ready to, to be bonded and move forward. The debt fund, like I said, just has that one little Cabela's bond in there, and it's about fifty thousand dollars a year. We put a portion of the taxes in here just to cover that little bit of a bond, but there's really nothing else going on in this one. And then RDA Two, if you look at the tax increment, I think this really tells you the story. You can see that it's really increasing year over year and going out. The line is that baseball agreement that we have, the million dollars a year, when that ends in twenty, when RDA Two ends in twenty thirty-five, the baseball agreement would continue on in RDA One until that agreement ends, which is twenty forty-three. So that concludes my presentation on this.
All right.
So if you have questions on that, or if you want recommendations as far as what you want to see in RDA Projects, I think in RDA Two, in order to use funds for the fire station, if that's something council wants to look at, we would need to look at doing a plan amendment, just an amendment to add that particular project to that RDA Plan, if that was something that council was in support of.
Okay. All right, thanks. I have a quick question, then we'll open it up. I want to make sure I understand, in RDA One, what are the major projects? You mentioned baseball agreement, and you said that ends in...
In RDA One, the baseball agreement is actually not in there yet. It will once RDA Two ends in twenty thirty-five, because the agreement goes until twenty forty-three. So it would have to come back to RDA One at some point.
So it's in RDA Two now, but it will come back in?
Yes.
Twenty thirty-five?
Yes.
Then is the garage in?
The garage is in RDA One, yes.
And do you know when that completes?
The garage is complete, it's just the revenues that we get from that garage.
Okay, I mean, is all the debt's paid?
Yes.
Okay, so what, what are, you said, the significant debt for RDA One? So what is that?
There were many projects, I mean, I might have to defer that one, but I know there were a lot of projects done along the river, along the river, there were lots of projects downtown around certain areas. There were, there was a whole plan around that debt when it was taken out many years ago.
Well, I think for the council's general knowledge, since half the people weren't here when that happened, and I wasn't even here when that happened, in fact, none of us were here when that happened. us were here when that happened. I think it'd be good in your next budget presentation to at least tell us what's in the, what specific projects that we can get our mind around.
Absolutely.
And when those things are paid off.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Well, let's open it up, Ms. Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Thank you, Vicky. And I have a hard, I still have a hard time getting my arms around the RDA1 and RDA2. So a couple of general questions. In the original budget, in the budget presentation that we just had, there was an RDA RD1 and 2 line item of $28 million, I think, at the very bottom. It was on page eight of your original presentation. And I'm wondering how you get those numbers from this, or should I be even looking at that? So this is the first one, the very first budget presentation, our last meeting at Reno City Council.
Oh, okay.
So it says RDA1 and 2, $28 million plus some change.
That would be the total of the expenditures budgeted for next year, plus their ending cash balance.
Okay.
So.
So if I look at RDA1, it looks like at the 24, 25, is there $2.2 million in there?
In RDA?
On page seven?
In the debt fund, yes, there would be 2.2. And then in RDA1, the general fund, 1.8. But a part of that in the general fund is not cash. It's a piece of property that is marked as held for resale. And we may realign that as far as accounting-wise to take it out of here. It has been sitting here. It's that little piece of property that's next to the plaza where they park vehicles on sometimes.
Okay.
I think the initial intent, when it was purchased a long time ago, they were going to resell it. So it sits on the books as kind of a cash thing that we're going to resell, but it's not necessarily available. And that's about $1 million of that 1.8.
So is it, the RDA1 money, when it starts kicking off, has to be spent in RDA1? And RDA2 money has to be spent in RDA2?
Yes. Or there has to be a nexus between that they could do, such as like the ballpark. The ballpark's in a spit, in a spot where it has a nexus between the two.
Okay.
So with the fire station, the fire station would have a nexus as well.
So we're, we really might be able to have some funding in this in 24, 25, in RDA2, where we can start doing stuff.
Yes.
I guess this is more of a comment into my colleagues. I'm wondering, would that, this board be the redevelopment agency to make those decisions, or is there an opportunity to actually create a redevelopment authority board?
You are the board.
Okay. So this is the board, and I'm wondering if there would be a different, because this is my question. I'm getting requests from people saying they want RDA money from constituents out there. They want this RDA money. And I don't think we have the mechanisms to even process what the application would look like, what the request would be, and how would we go about making those decisions? Because we haven't had any money. We haven't had to. So I would be interested in seeing what that looks like.
Each area does have their own redevelopment area plan that was originally adopted and amended as it's moved along. So based on what's in that plan, that will determine what you can do with those funds within that area. And like I mentioned with the fire station, the fire station does not currently exist in the plan, but we could bring back a plan amendment to the board here to approve if that's something that the board wanted to do.
Okay. So I guess I'm just thinking of how we would go about functionally spending this money moving forward, once we have money that we haven't had before. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it would happen at this board. We would ask staff to bring back proposals. We have a redevelopment staff now.
And I think I would be interested in seeing other options of that, just to see how other entities and other cities and other places have been doing it. It'd be nice to get some actual experts in the redevelopment space and in finance and downtowns or redevelopment boards. I would, I would be interested in that. Thank you.
You could absolutely bring that back with the next, kind of do a more in-depth into it.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Martinez?
Yeah, thank you so much, Madam Vice Mayor. Thanks, Vicky, again, for the great information and presentation. I think I'm just trying to understand those projected $10 million that we're talking about. And you, this was brought up in our first meeting earlier this day, when we talked about the contingency funds. And now we're talking about an RDA. So I'm just trying to understand, is there 20 million to play with, or is this two same bucket, different buckets?
Different buckets.
Are you just giving us options, basically, to consider?
I'm just giving you options for it. As you can see, this is the slide here. We have a beginning balance. At the end of this year, right now, we've only spent about $100,000 on some projects that they're working on. So at the end of the year, we would have about $13 million. That would be the third column there. Without changing anything and just paying the baseball agreement, we're going to get more property tax in here, and we're going to end the year at $18 million. So there is an opportunity to assign some of that and do something with it. And that is where I'm kind of putting out my thoughts on using 10 million of that 18 to go ahead and get the fire station started by doing that site work and doing that work ahead of time before we actually need a bond. So it gives us that gap.
But is that, to answer, I mean, to ask, but that's not the same 10 million that you were pointing us?
No.
That was savings?
Yes.
So I don't think we understood that. We didn't understand that.
This is separate. Yes.
Yeah. But we understand it now.
So we would have 10 million that we would be saving toward it, and we could also use 10 million from here. What that does is decrease the amount of debt that we would need in the future for the fire station, potentially. I, I think, just my personal thoughts are that probably the costs are going to increase, like we've seen in every other capital project that we have. And so from a fiscal side of it, I think it's best to put aside money as we can, and we have it available to work toward that. We've seen with the Public Safety Center and the pool, we've had to keep coming back for furniture and fixtures and some of these other things. So I think it's fiscally prudent, if we have the funds, to kind of look, that would be a good option.
And I don't know if this next question is for later time, when we do explore that option, but what would it look like to do, to make an amendment to the plan to include the headquarters in the RDA?
I don't think it would be, it would just have to come back to this board to approve a plan amendment. So we'd have to just work with legal on what that would look like. But I don't think it would entail anything very complicated.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Reese?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Ms. Van Buren, it feels like we're a year away from really wanting to have more substantive discussions, because until there are dollars in these various funds, I'm not sure what you're looking for from us today. For my part, I think I am sort of cautiously agreeing that we should have the ability to apply these funds to the fire station, potentially. But I also know that we made a decision, and given your good work on the bond side, we made the decision to go out and look at bonds as a way of financing. So at the end of the day, if we finance some of it with bonds, if we use some cash on hand to make that gap, I think that will be a question that will arise later, especially as we get into more specific and targeted project costs. But I will say, just generally speaking, the redevelopment agencies, and we'll just focus on two, because I think one's a little bit harder. You know, I suppose the goal is to spend the dollars in the area where it's been generated for the benefit of that area, right? We set up the redevelopment agencies in order to look at a particular area of town, primarily in the downtown environment. And ultimately, it may be that this is where we get the funds to have a broader discussion about our parks, our plan along the river, some of the revitalization efforts that we've gone through in the Virginia street placemaking study, where we've got a bunch of projects that we have not been able to fully fund. And, and maybe this is where those funds come from, to better finish off the Believe Plaza and the Locomotion Plaza and all those areas. So I'm interested in really having more in-depth discussions about that when the funds are actually there. So again, it feels like we're a year away from really having to make those more broader discussions. But I think we're on the right track. I think Mr. McArdle and his team will be, you know, the folks who really will have a greater input in what we're going to do with these dollars. And ultimately, I think that those conversations will happen here as we sort of decide what to do with these dollars. I don't think there'll be a big grab where we're going to use them to backfill a whole bunch of needs in the general fund or something weird like that. But perhaps there are overlaps between this and our priorities for public safety, especially if it relates to downtown teams. And so there's a lot going on here, but it feels like we're just a year earlier than I thought we'd be having the conversation. But those are some of my general thoughts.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Ebert, any thoughts on the redevelopment agency budget?
I just wanted to also say that I think this is a great way to help fund the fire station. I think that that's something that's really needs to be funded. And I'm not sure on the timing piece of it, whether it be something that we decide now or a year from now. But I think it's something that we really need to, to fund for our firefighters. So thank you.
Okay. I'm going to concur with the comments we've already heard. I don't want to be repetitive, but again, I do support the fire station work. It supports everyone, helps everyone. And I do want to go back to my first question about the items in the RDA budget. I've been informed Mr. McArdle's here, I see him. And I was wondering for next meeting, if you could give us something comprehensive, but if he could just speak to, what are some of the big-ticket items in there? So we're, get our mind around it.
Yeah, Brian McArdle, Revitalization Manager. So there are multiple projects, part of the streetscape improvements with the stamped concrete and the light poles downtown, the bowling stadium, I believe the Palladio received some funds. On the website, if you go to the redevelopment section, there is a list of funded, funded projects that happened previously, as well as unfunded projects that were proposed but never funded. And so you can review all those. I don't have specifics on the deals that went in to those and the amounts. I do know that they weren't bonded against. I believe the only thing that bonded-
That's what I wanted to know. Is, is there bonding against this? No?
No. I think the only thing that was bonded was the ballpark.
Okay. Okay. And that's an RDA2 at this time?
Okay. It's just an agreement, not a bond. Excuse me.
Yeah. All right. Very good. All right. Well, I think we're ready to, now, let me, I may have been remiss in our last hearing. We didn't actually take a motion, but I think you understood our council direction.
Yes.
We all went through. But it looks like you want a motion on this one.
Similar to the other one. It's just feedback on what you want to see coming forward.
All right.
I'll move to direct staff to move forward with the development of the fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget, based on the feedback from this body.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion from Councilmember Reese, second from Councilmember Martinez. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Motion passes unanimously. And that takes us, I believe, to, there's no ordinances either introduced or adopted. Mayor and council items, comments. Any comments? This one? I'm seeing none. There's no public hearings. We're looking at a final public comment.
Madam Vice Mayor, we do not have anyone registered. If you're on Zoom and would like to make public comment, please raise your hand at this time. Seeing none, we're going to close public comment, and we're looking for a motion to adjourn.
All right.
One second.
All right. I have a motion from Councilmember Reese, second from Councilmember Ebert to adjourn our meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimous. We are adjourned.